I'd like to welcome all of our board members and staff members and the public to our March 2 state charter school board meeting. I wanted to ensure that those who are in attendance are aware that there are bathrooms just outside of these doors, right here in the hall to my right. In addition, there are emergency exits at both ends of this room and at the building, of the building, so that you're aware of how to get out if there's an emergency of any kind. I wanted to excuse Chair Bowles. He is unable to be here today due to previous conflicts, and I will be chairing this meeting in his stead as he has asked me to do. Also, we have Member Spiker on Zoom, and we welcome her virtually, and all of our other members besides then Chair Bowles are here today. Chair Bowles has assigned Member Eric Olson to give the pledge of allegiance, and we would like to ask him to lead us in that pledge at this time.
Everyone stand please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, to the nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Olson, and public. At this time, we would invite those who have, excuse me? Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you so much, Director Lambert. Apparently, the overflow room is available, and the meeting is streaming in there too, so if you'd like to join the meeting essentially right next door, that would be wonderful. We'd like you to have seats if you need seats, and we're excited that so many people are here. That's wonderful. In the meantime, we'd like to invite those who have signed up for public comment to come up, and in fact, do I have a list of those? Oh, thank you. Okay. I'll ask you to only speak for two minutes. That's been typically our traditional allotted time for public comment. And I would ask something else as well. A few, a few board meetings ago, I gave a, my thought, I was assigned by Chair Bowles to give a thought about the importance of civility and discourse. I think it's highly appropriate to, and you have the right to, as, as members of the public disagree with ideas, actions, all kinds of things, but what you do not have a right to do in this public meeting is to disparage an individual. So I want to make sure that the discourse remains civil, that we welcome criticism, we need criticism as a public body in order to do things well. We need to know where the public thinks we're not meeting the mark. But there will be no personal disparagement allowed during the public comment or at any time in the meeting. So I'd like to invite, first of all, Michelle Garcia to come up. And could I have someone help with the timing? Oh, thank you. Okay, very good. And remember to push this little speak button that makes this go red, so that we can actually hear you.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Garcia, and I am a student at Vanguard. This is my second year, and I am very happy with all the work that I've accomplished at that school. Previously went to West High, and I wasn't doing so well. And once I moved to Vanguard, they gave me the opportunity to recover everything that I had missed at my old school, and they have always supported me in helping me do well at school. And even from teachers to the students, they have all been very sweet and very accepting of me. Everything that they've done has been very beneficial to me, and it will be appreciated to my teachers. I would like to thank Vanguard and everyone at that school for everything that they've done to me. My dad also wanted to say something. I have no relation with the administration of Vanguard Academy. Ever since that they've been here, they have improved a lot, and they have shown a lot of progress here at Vanguard. They have helped them through these two years that they've been here, and I am very grateful and pleased with the way that they have been treated at this school, and how far they've come. Seeing the difference of how they've been doing at this school, and they have been standing out very well, and I'd like to thank everyone at Vanguard for their advocacy and their support and their commitment. Everybody, everybody should consider how much they've helped everybody, and how they have been able to do this.
Thank you so much, Ms. Garcia. We appreciate you coming and giving public comment. If we could ask Ann Kingston to approach and give her public comment.
My name is Ann Kingston, and I am the PTO president at Vanguard. I currently have three children attending Vanguard, and all three of them are involved in student government. They were elected student body president, the 10th grade president, and the 7th grade president. They are in magicals and the choir, and my 10th grader actually plays on the varsity basketball team, which just took state, third place at state, which we're really proud of. All three of my Vanguard students have a 4.0 GPA, and I have been so impressed with the teachers and the administration at Vanguard and the things that they have done to help my students succeed. The school definitely deserves the A grade that it received from the State Board of Education. With the help from the team of counselors and the advisors that they have, that they have at Vanguard, my senior will graduate with 50 college credits this year. My sophomore will be able to graduate with his associates in 2025. And I love that I'm able to send my kids to a school that offers them all of their academic and their extracurricular needs. Vanguard made all of these things possible despite the uncertainty that was caused when the decision was made to put the school on probation and the threat of closure. I don't understand why Vanguard Academy is still on probationary status after they've been making so many changes to accommodate the things that they've been asked to do. And I am here to ask the State Charter Board that you guys take them off of probationary status so that my children and others can attend Vanguard and have the kind of experience that my children that have graduated and my children that are currently attending have had at Vanguard. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kingston. We appreciate you coming in and making your comments. Victoria Stevens, if you could come and give your public comment now. Thank you.
It's a red thing here. Okay, sounds good. And I hope you guys don't mind me just reading from my phone, but good morning. It is an honor to see you guys all again. I am Victoria Stevens, and I am a mother to two students who attend Vanguard, and they're actually in attendance today. I have taken some time recently to examine, to examine the opportunities that were given to me in my schooling, and by sheer coincidence, I actually attended West High also, graduated a year early. So I've taken some opportunity to look at the, the, the things that I was given in my schooling and those that are available to my children. And to say that I was excited to learn that my children, when old enough, have the opportunity to take college courses while in high school is an understatement. Every day, I drop my children off to school, knowing that they are being given every opportunity possible to grow. They're able to grow to be outstanding young men, outstanding students, and outstanding members of the state. I have dreams of my children getting higher education to become architects that help design and build the next great building for Utah, politicians that help to create laws, sorry, that help to create laws that make Utah an even greater state, doctors that are on the team of researchers who find the cure or treatment to something big, and the list goes on. I have dreams of my children becoming and doing great things, things that while I could only dream of for myself are now a reality for them. I feel so blessed as a mother that my sons and daughters, when old enough, will be able to get the education they need from people who genuinely care about their success. Success that will help to grow strong businesses, that help build a strong economy and state. Successes that I was only able to dream of for myself, but are within reach of my children due to Vanguard charter being an option for education. I love and support this school, and I ask you to find love and support for it and my children's success as well. Please don't take away my children's school. They need this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Stevens, for coming and giving public comment. We'd like to invite Brianna Jenkins. Brianna, I hope I read your last name correctly, okay, to give public comment. Thank you.
Hi, I am Brianna Jenkins. I am a graduate from Vanguard. I graduated in 2021. I am a current attendee of the University of Utah. I'm pursuing my bachelor's in art teaching degree. In September, alongside a few fellow alumni, I organized a rally against some of the biased actions of this board, and over 1,700 people came in support. These are text messages exchanged between Jennifer Lambert and Tanya Tool during that time. Tanya Tool is the director of a Mormon Baptist rescue ministry who believe that they are called in Christ to reverse the curse of my family and my, my heritage. I want to know if this board is going to continue to follow the recommendations of this anti-Mormon religious zealot. Vanguard should be taken off of probation. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins, for your public comment. We appreciate you making the effort to come and speak to us today. We have an opportunity now to proceed with the agenda, and Chair Bowles had wanted a moment where we consider our mission, vision, values, and review, and I wanted to focus for a minute on trust. It's one of our values that, as a board, we, we chose, we decided was important to emphasize. As stated in our mission, vision, and values, we are accountable to the people of Utah to authorize and oversee good schools. Great trust is placed in us to hold schools accountable. At times, this means making hard decisions, which cannot be passed to any other entity. To quote President Truman, "The buck stops here." Now, trust is an interesting thing. Our, we are not the Utah State Board of Education, we are the state charter school board, and one of our main, in fact, our raison d'etre, our reason for being, is to actually authorize schools, and then to monitor and, and hold them accountable. But the authorization is with, is our main function. And no entity in this state that is, besides for, I guess you could say for other authorizers as well, institutions of higher education and districts may also authorize charter schools, but we authorize the majority. And none of these corporations receive public monies from us or public students, the right to actually have them come through the door until we authorize them. And as a result of that, it becomes incumbent upon us to ensure that, first of all, the students are receiving a good education, or if they're not, that we help the schools and support them toward that end. And then, of course, ensure that the monies that are being distributed to these schools are being spent in the way that the public demands, not that we personally demand, but the way the public demands. And that is to say, the procurement code, statute, administrative rule. And I think that, as we consider both the history of this school and of many other schools that we've authorized, as well as, both in terms of academics and in terms of remediation, and some of the deficiencies that we have looked at, we need to remember that we have some competing interests that we have to balance, but some absolute things that we have to enforce. And one of the things I think that we have demonstrated by our public comment in our board is how pleased we are in many ways for several things related to Vanguard Academy. One is that they are traditionally serving underserved students in our state. That's a good thing by itself. The second thing would be that they consistently provide an excellent education. Those things are not in dispute. Those things are appreciated. Those things are high marks for schools that we authorize. We want all of our schools to reach those. But the thing that we have identified, and that does cause us pause on our value of trust, is the question around whether or not public monies are being spent the way the public requires. And so, those are the things that we have had to come together over these last many months and try to determine, try to identify for the school, and try to help them succeed at. It's our greatest desire as a board that authorized this school, although those of us who are members now are, are not in fact, the ones who authorized the school. Nevertheless, our body did, our group did. And it is our greatest desire to see that school succeed. We want every school we authorize to continue to provide a wonderful education for its students. But we've also had to close schools. We've had to close schools who aren't financially viable. We've had to close schools who, in spite of our support, were not able to make the academic mark that we require. And we've had schools that have closed themselves for those reasons, without even our taking the motion. So for the record, I would like to say that as we go into this meeting, we are considering the value of trust. Trust as to whether or not the charter that we gave Vanguard and that we give all the schools we authorize has been, is now, or has the potential to give us confidence and trust in the expenditure of funds. And that is really, those are the deficiencies, and even the deficiencies that aren't specific to procurement are related to that trust. And so, my, our hope is that we can get clarity today to some degree, that we can make a determination about the best way to proceed from this point, given both the history and the current actions by the school, and that we can make a decision based on that information that is in alignment with the trust that the state has put in us as an authorizer. As we move through this meeting, we would first like to have one of our newest members, and we've all been so excited to have her on our board, Member Rebecca Cisneros, provide a thought for us today.
Thank you. So recently, I, I thought this was big news, but when I've talked to a few people, they didn't know what I was talking about, so maybe, maybe I'm in the know. Apparently, Chick-fil-A, which invented the greatest chicken sandwich on planet earth in Philadelphia, had to make a policy where they were not allowing minors under the age of 16 in their restaurant. Okay, good, I'm not the only person who knows about this. And so, this makes international news, and then the comments, right, the comments that people on Twitter and around the internet decide to jump in. And, and of course, it is now a reflection on society and how horrible young people are, and, and the world is going to hell in a handbasket because these, this group of kids, the Chick-fil-A in Philadelphia. And I got to thinking about, about that, since I work in a high school, and I interact with 400 young people day in and day out, and I, I love being in education because of the, the people for whom we work. And it reminded me of a thing I saw recently, that around 2000 B.C., they, the Egyptians wrote in a tomb, "We live in a decaying age. Young people no longer respect their parents. They are rude and impatient." And we could go through annals of history where something of that Twitter feed, we've seen for 4,000 years now of people complaining. So whether it's Egyptians or Twitter users, everyone seems to think that kids nowadays just don't know how to behave. So I thought I would share instead some of the kids who do know how to behave, and introduce you to some young people who would be welcomed into any Chick-fil-A. And the first one, actually, his name is Jason, and I actually got his permission. He works at a Walmart neighborhood grocery, and he impressed me so much that I made a point to get his name and talk to him. There was an older gentleman who was using the self-checkout for the first time, and was obviously confused about how to make this process work. And Jason stopped what he was doing, walked over, and spent the time helping this man. But what was most impressive was there was no condescension in his voice. He was patient, he was kind, he was respectful. He worked with this gentleman, and he felt comfortable. And then he said, "Don't worry, you got it this next time." And, and it was so wonderful to watch this young man, 17 years old, behave in a way that his mother would have been so proud to watch Jason behave that day. Then I got to thinking about our students in NHS. Our little 400 school, student school, logs over 1,000 hours of service every year through NHS. And these are kids who have 3.5 GPAs, they work jobs, and yet they still choose to apply to, be interviewed for, to participate in an organization, but they then go out and require service from them. This year, we brought in a young lady from another school who has a pretty severe trauma background, and because she is dealing with some trauma, and she doesn't want to eat, soon as lunch rolls around, she actually comes and sits in the office. And when she first came in, she would curl herself up in a little ball in the corner between our books and one of the chairs. And we have just let her be, but the impressive thing is two young ladies who have made it a point to get to know her, and over time, now they leave their lunch, and they come in, and they sit with her in the office. And now, this young lady sits in a chair, and the three of them sit in a chair together, and sometimes they talk, and sometimes they just be and just are. But this young lady is now starting to open up. She eats a little bit during lunch. She has friends, people know her name, and we're watching her come out and blossom because of some other students who have taken the time to get to know her. We have a very active Hope Squad, and one of the things that they've chosen to do is every quarter, members of the Hope Squad write a personal note to at least one member of the school. So every student gets a letter from another student every quarter, applauding them on things that have happened. So there's never a student who doesn't have somebody of their peers who knows who they are. Last year, as a 10th grader, we had a student who came in with selective mutism. And interestingly, the only person who could get her to open up and engage is a delightful young man who, he wears Let's Go Brandon shirts, so that will give you just an indication of, of how delightful he is. He's very proud of himself, he's very confident, and I really just adore this young man. And for whatever reason, those two connected, and he was able to, so that she could be included in class discussions, she could be included in what was going on. And this year, she signed up actually to be part of a class we're starting on how to use dialogue to build relationships, and actually has taken a volunteer position at an assisted living facility, just talking to residents that are there. When I asked some people around the school for some stories above those ones that I came up with, my office manager reminded me of how honest our students are, regularly turning in cash, AirPods jewelry, never expecting it to come back to them, and every student feeling like they can come into the office and know that their belongings that they misplaced are going to be there. And then one of the counselors said, "Rebecca, there's just too many stories to tell. I refuse to believe that Itinerous is alone in these stories. I choose to believe that the students of Utah, the students of our nation and of our world are amazing, hardworking, dedicated young people who are not the exception, but instead are the rule, trying to make their spaces better. I sincerely believe that Chick-fil-A stories like that make the news, but that the students, like my students at Itinerous and at your schools, are actually the ones that are newsworthy." And that's my thought for today.
Thank you, Member Cisneros. What a great thought. And for those of us, most of us, who have been involved as teachers, administrators in schools, feel, I think, with you that our, our youth are the hope of the world, and that they are very much ill-represented by those that make the news, and that the majority of them are absolutely the spark that, that will take us, us into the future in the most positive way. in the most positive way. And we, we thank you for reminding us about that, reminding us why we do the work we do. It's my privilege for the next few minutes to give you a board chair report. Three things that I'd like to highlight that are going on with the state charter school board that even some of our board members might need a reminder about. The first is that we have continued, as you know, our engagement with National Charter Schools Institute, and we engaged them based on a board vote in a recent board meeting. And this is the group that came to our strategic planning meeting this last year and gave us some good training as a board. We know we have work to do as a group, both in terms of understanding our mission and vision better, as well as ensuring that our strategic plan is on target, as well as having the best possible working relationship, not only between our staff and board, but also with our SEA, the USBE. And so, in the next few weeks, you may be interested to know that training will begin with our staff and then follow with our board that's related to authorizing support and our strategic plan. And so, we're looking forward to becoming better at what we do, seeing the cracks and the problems in our systems and working together to improve those. We are also hoping that we will be presenting at the National Public Charter School Association as a board and staff group. We have submitted some proposals to present, and if, if any of those proposals, even one of them is accepted, we will be there and hope that we can offer our own experience and our own expertise to others who might be just starting out or who might be new to authorizing, and we're excited about that. One other thing too, that we are going to be working on in earnest as soon as the legislative session is over, which should be by all accounts this evening, right? Maybe midnight. And one of the things that the legislature has put some serious positive pressure on our board and the USBE to do is to put together an MOU, which we haven't ever had, that would delineate better our responsibilities vis-à-vis their responsibilities as a board, our relationship to them within this building physically, but also more specifically related to responsibility, accountability, and other things in terms of the schools that we authorize. They are ultimately the Board of Public Ed, and so all public education students are under their purview, but where we fit into that in relation to them has been more organically determined. And what our hope is, is that we can work with our USBE counterparts and develop an MOU that we hope becomes the template for excellence between SEAs and authorizing entities within their states. If you look at the ones that exist now, there, there are a lot of deficits with them. They're not impressive, and we want ours to be the one that becomes the impressive one. We would very much like, like to work with our, our USBE to provide that and maybe even to help others to do better as well. We've tried in the past, and we have failed. So this will be a redoubling of efforts, a recommitment with new leadership on the USBE and kind of some legislative push. So we're very excited about that, and, and we're, we're hoping that our liaison with the USBE will even be supportive of that and, and help that to happen. So thank you, and thank you for so much for being here.
Thank you.
That finishes my board, or my chair report, and we will ask at this time Director Lambert to give the executive director report.
Well, good morning. It just so happens what I chose to focus my director's report on today bounces right off of what Member Cisneros said. I'm going to just highlight just a few of the things that are going on in our schools. And this, of course, is not anywhere near all of it. When we get information, we put it on our social media, but I know that, that may not, I don't know if you guys are on social media all the time or not, but you may have missed some of these things. So I want to start off up north in Thomas Edison Charter Schools. There are two schools in the Logan area. They had their science fair, and so here you have a picture of a couple of students introducing their, what they did at their science fair. So we congratulate those students and also the teachers that, and parents who helped them along with that. Now, at Mountain View Montessori, they had, they celebrated Read Across America, and they did so by dressing up as some of their favorite characters from their books. And so here you have a picture. I'm not 100% sure, but I'm going to guess the Queen of Hearts from Alice in Wonderland. But you see lots of individuals just dressed up, and how much fun that must have been to just reemphasize the reading. Ascend Academies, they have a, a few different satellite campuses throughout the Wasatch Front. They had Utah Opera actually come to them, and this is a, a picture from one of those assemblies, and just being able to have such great collaborations. And many of our schools have these kind of collaborations with the community, with the arts, with different organizations, and this is one such. And you can see, it looks like a lot of fun. Two of our schools, they recently put on the Lion King Junior, that is Gateway Preparatory Academy, and the Ranches Academy. And so, I don't have pictures from those, but here you have just the, the playbill. So congratulations to them, to their students in, in putting on such a, a great, great performances. And then I want to end with AIMS. AIMS, we always call them AIMS, but it actually stands for the Academy for Math Engineering and Science. They had five national merit finalists, and so we want to congratulate them and their students. So that is my director's report for today.
Thank you. What a positive report. That's a lot of fun to see what snapshots a few of our students or our schools are doing with our students. We appreciate your work and we appreciate you always bringing us information that is not only stuff we have to maybe act on that is difficult, but that is also some of the things that are highlights of our wonderful charter schools.
Good news.
Yeah, really good news. Thank you. We have a consent calendar that we need to consider. This has on it amended January meeting minutes. You recall that our Member Cisneros found some things that she wanted to amend that we all found appropriate last time, some amended February meeting minutes, and a monthly budget report. So hopefully you've had a chance to review those, and I'm looking for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar, also with a thanks to Ms. Castillo for making those changes for me.
Thank you. We have a motion from Member Cisneros, and it has been seconded by Member Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously, it looks like. We are going to go to the second part of our meeting. It's kind of the second big agenda item on our meeting. Originally, this was going to be in a closed session, and after leadership had discussions with our AAG, Mr. Kevin Olson, we determined that the appropriate place for this report would be an open session. One of the things we've really worked hard on as a board is transparency. And there are, of course, times when executive session is 100% appropriate. But these, as we learned from Ms. Stephenson and her children, as I recall last meeting, these are very narrow reasons. And we felt that these reports today did not meet the narrow definition for an executive session. And so, we would like to invite, you'll recall, just for the, the public who are listening, both here in the room as well as online, you'll recall that in the wake of, of, of some concern about how we as a board could support Vanguard best, we determined that placing some experts in who would help with administration, with business management, and with board processes, people that were neutral, that were experts, and that both we in the school could trust. We were very clear about choosing people that fit all of those characteristics. We decided that that would be the best way we could help the school toward a resolution of deficiencies. And so, along with support from our staff, but those would be some very, very big ways of helping. And, and our, our hope, of course, always is that those deficiencies will be resolved. And as a result of that, we placed Rachel Anderson in a position to work with the board. We placed Michael Clark in a position to work with administration, and we placed Brad Wilkinson to work with business management. And so, during this next segment of our board meeting, we would like to have each of those individuals, in that order, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Clark, and Mr. Wilkinson, come up and give us a, a report about what you have been able to support at Vanguard, how that's going, and whatever else you feel is important to comment on at this time. So Ms. Anderson, if, if you're in the, there, okay, I wasn't sure if you were joining online. Thank you so much.
I was there first.
Okay. Thank you so much for joining, and we would love to hear a report from you about your experience.
Yeah, thank you. So for those of you that don't know me, Rachel Anderson, I'm an attorney here in Salt Lake, and my primary practice area is in the area of local government, specifically local districts and special service districts. I, I have another colleague at my firm that focuses entirely on school districts, and I assist her sometimes, but to the extent that my practice focuses on local government, I work with boards every single day, and that's basically my bread and butter of my job, in representing governing boards in their compliance with government requirements, Open and Public Meetings Act, Procurement Code, GRMA, all of those requirements, as well as just their ongoing business operations. I act as general counsel for them. So I believe that that's why I was selected, because of my expertise in the regard to local government boards, and to the extent that these charter school boards are subject to many of the same requirements, it seemed like a perfect fit. So that's my background. I had the opportunity to attend several meetings over the last few months of Vanguard Charter, or Vanguard Academy. My, my involvement was less than what you'll be hearing from the other two individuals. I wasn't there on a day-to-day basis. I attended the board meetings, and the first several board meetings I attended, I took as the opportunity to really just sort of information gather and, and learn how they are running their board and how things are going. I also had a one-on-one meeting with the board chair, Eric Freeman, at the outset, discussed how they operate their board, policies that they had. He sent me copies of their board policies, their bylaws, and that sort of thing, so I could, you know, look at those. I will say that I, I came into this, obviously not in the position of representing the charter school by any means, so I didn't do any deep dives into policies or contracts that they were entering. I felt like that was more the role of their own attorney, obviously, as well as your oversight. So it was a little bit more of a big picture. So that said, I appreciated my time attending their board meetings and seeing, seeing how they operate, and towards the end, I can't remember if it was last month or, I guess it might have been this month, this month's over now. Well, February's over now. February! I'm still in Februaryland. I was able to present some, some advice and, and conclusions to the board. So I'm going to kind of share that with you, basically what I had shared with them, and maybe a little bit more. On the whole, I will just give you my impressions of the, of the board operation, and I felt that the, the board meetings were, were run well. The board was operating within the confines of the law. They expressed definite, I, I noted numerous times where comments were expressed in regards to wanting to be in compliance with laws and specifically to improve in the areas that you guys have noted to them, specifically in regards to procurement. And again, I have, I did not take a deep dive into any one particular procurement or any one particular contract. I didn't feel like that was my role. However, they did modify and update their procurement policy while I was there, and from what I could tell, the, the, the plan that they adopted was, was pretty robust in terms of how they planned to proceed with procurements in the future, in regards to having a specific committee that, that reviews those, robust procedures for removing members that might have a conflict of interest. I, I noted numerous times where they commented on wanting to avoid conflicts of interest, specifically because it was required by law, but also because they wanted very much to be in compliance with your notations to them. And I, I saw them adopt a few, or approve a few contracts that had gone through their procurement process, where it was noted that there were no conflicts of interest, so you know, that, I, so I guess my conclusion there is that I definitely see a, a strong desire for them moving forward to, to comply in areas with procurement specifically. Again, I can't speak specifically to any one particular contractor or anything like that, but the, the desire is there. In regards to the meetings, I, I would say that my, my biggest concern, and it, and I will put the caveat that it wasn't a super big concern, but my biggest concern was I felt that they were having too many meetings in between the meetings, if that makes sense. So you adopt your annual board schedule, and they've adopted a one-meeting-a-month board schedule, and they were scheduling a lot of in-between meetings in between those, those dates. That said, they were complying 100% with the law. They were posting public notice within 24 hours before those meetings. And I spoke to them about that. The feedback I got there was that that's not usual, that in regards to all that's going on with this process of review, they felt like they've had more to talk about and more to go through, and so I said, "That's fair." But I did suggest that if they do feel like they don't, if the once a month is not enough, they're certainly more than welcome to adopt a twice-a-month board meeting schedule if that might be more effective for them. I think they're going to, you know, consider that. I don't, I, like I said, I think the feedback I got from them was that this was a bit of an unusual situation. But I did recommend that if you are going to have extra meetings, to try to limit those to the specific purpose that, that needs to be heard more urgently, rather than just making it another board meeting and putting in all sorts of board matters, because in, in the interest of the public, you know, they're going to look at your annual schedule and think, if they go to these monthly meetings, they're going to be getting the monthly meetings, and maybe not realizing that other meetings were being added in the meantime. But I did not sense any mal-intent there or any attempt to put in things, discussions that they didn't want the public to hear about. I mean, it was all open in public, it was posted, and it, and it wasn't even anything controversial that they were talking about. It really was day-to-day type stuff. It was just a suggestion I had. So like I said, that was a, perhaps even my biggest concern, and it wasn't even that big of a concern. So I, I also presented to them, the, the rest of what I presented to them as, as advice was, was more general advice that I thought would be useful to, that I, any board really, and it wasn't necessarily in response to problems that I was seeing with them, but I did discuss with them sort of the general concept of, of well-functioning boards needing to have a, an appropriate balance between the board member's policymaking responsibilities and the administration's operational responsibilities, and that I have seen in my practice times where that gets out of balance in either direction. Either you have a board that is too much of a rubber stamp and isn't, isn't doing the due diligence that they're required by law and their fiduciary duty to accomplish. And I've likewise seen instances where the board is too involved and perhaps micromanaging a little bit the, the leadership of the organization. I was not involved enough on a day-to-day basis to necessarily know if they were falling into either of those traps, but I felt like that was a really helpful instruction to give them, and to the extent that I could tell that they wanted to learn how to be a better board. So hopefully that was helpful for them. And then I also just provided some other materials for them. The state auditor, for instance, requires my entities that I represent, local and special service districts, to fill out these best practices checklists, and I'm not sure that those are being required by the charter schools. I don't think that they are. So I provided them with those checklists. I said, "Obviously, this isn't required, but it's really useful for you to go through and, as an organization, sort of self-analyze yourself, and you can see if you're following these best practices." And they were receptive to that. I don't- I don't know if they've done that yet because it was fairly recently. So that was sort of the extent of my involvement, like I said, my involvement was less than what you're going to hear from the other two, but I went in with an open mind. I, I purposely tried not to get too much in-depth of what the complaints had been, I wanted to just kind of go in and see how I felt things were operating and it, it honestly felt like it was running pretty smoothly to me. And I, I definitely felt like there was the desire to, to do right and to fix things that was, comments were made numerous times in that regard about how do we do this correctly so that we can keep our charter? So I know that that's, that's definitely a concern of theirs, so open to questions from many of you.
Board members, first of all, thank you, Ms. Anderson, for not only your work with the school and the expertise that you've brought into that board and, and that effort, but also for your willingness to come and give a report today.
Yeah, no problem.
Board members, do you have some questions for Ms. Anderson? All right.
Okay.
Thank you so much. We would ask at this time then, Mr. Michael Clark to come forward and give us a report if, if he would.
Nice to see all of you today. Thank you for the opportunity to come down and share with you my thoughts and my experience while I, while I Vanguard. I, like Rachel, I, I came into this experience with an open mind. I didn't read a lot into the media reports or listen to any of the other board meetings in preparation of my experience there. I wanted to have an open mind so that my experience was genuine and sincere. I started March 8th, sorry, excuse me, I started November 8th and spent about four months at the school. For those that don't know me, I, I have extensive experience in charter schools. I've, I've not only been a teacher and an early college charter, charter school, but I've, I've been an administrator, a principal and worked with your board actually for many years and, and, and charter school oversight. And so I have a really deep knowledge in charter school oversight, charter school best practice and what it takes to, to run a charter school properly. And so I, with this experience, I, I came into, to Vanguard Academy and like I said, I, I came in with an open mind. That first day, I walked through the doors and I was greeted by two students. And those of you that have worked in charter schools for many years or schools in general know that the, the, the first impression or the first indication of the culture of the school happens when you walk through those doors. You can, you can feel it, it's palatable. And as I walked through those doors and I was greeted by two students because I couldn't find the office, two very kind students, I could feel the, the culture of this school. I could see and understand, you know, if this school was positive or if it was a, had a negative culture. And immediately I discovered that it was a very positive culture, the students very kind, they were very willing to show me where the office was and take me to where I can meet the administration. That, that initial experience with those students really hung, hung with me over some time because it, it, it was a window to what I would find with the culture at Vanguard Academy. School culture is a very delicate thing, it's a very hard thing to create, a very, a positive school culture, there's a lot of different things that, that attack it over time. And we, we know that the data demonstrates that as, as the school culture increases or as the, as, as, as the, the positive atmosphere in a culture is, increases, so does student learning and student academic success. And I, I think this is one of the, the, the key points at why Vanguard is so successful in its, in its, in its education of its students is because it's a strong, strong culture. It definitely supports the learning there. But today I want to really focus in on, on talking about three different bodies of, of, of individuals at the school. You have the student body, I'll talk a little bit more about them. You have the, the leadership team, which includes the, the, really the whole staff at the school, including the leader, I worked mostly with the leadership team. And then the, the governing board. And I have a unique perspective on each one of those because I worked for quite some time with each one of those groups. And so I wanted to report to you on my experience with those. And I want to start with the administration. The, I found the administration at Vanguard Academy to be very well, be very skilled in, 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 as, as experts in, in, in teaching and in learning. They have really created an environment and an atmosphere that, that enables students to learn at a high capacity. If you look at the data of the school, it's an A school, there's no, you know, it's getting an A school as a charter, that's a hard thing to do, it's a very difficult thing to do. And Vanguard has been able to do that and they've been able to do that with their, their, their teaching staff and their good leadership. Whenever you, you go into a leadership role at a school, creating that the culture of the school is, is, is paramount. That's, that was always my first main goal was to, to go into a program and to make sure that I set the culture or at least I reset the culture if it needs to be reset. And that's because, like I mentioned earlier, there's such a strong tie between culture and, and learning and student growth. The more that a student loves their school and loves their teacher, loves the people they, they go to school work and they work with, the, the, the higher likelihood that they are going to be successful within their program. Plays out in, in studies for many, many years. And so as I, as I came in and started working with the, the administration and the, the teachers, I could tell that they were the, they were instrumental in creating this very, very positive culture. One of the very first staff meetings I attended, they were celebrating each other, teachers, talking about how, how, I think they all wrote several notes to each other about how, how supportive they were of one another and how great they thought they, they were working towards, you know, the, you know, high, high student achievement and whatnot. But they shared a lot of really positive things about each other and that adds to a positive culture as well. The culture really is a, is a top-down kind of a thing. And so the administration I found to be very, very skilled within that, very skilled in, in, in building a school and a system where there's a high culture and a high tolerance for, for learning and, and those kinds of things. I found the administration to really love their students and really care about their students. I found the teachers to really care about their students. I spent time in every single classroom, I got to know every single teacher, I spent time with, with, with every single member of the leadership staff. And this, these are a group of people that are really dedicated to their students and to seeing their students be successful. And so, well, how are they, how are they able to do this? How are they able to, to graduate such large amounts of students and, and with college credits with, with massive amounts of college credits? It's their culture that they've created and it's the love and the passion and the hard work that they put in to making Vanguard a great place to be. One of the key things that I found was, that was really, really important and instrumental into their, their success as a school was their, their GPS program and their GPS plan. Every single student at that school is on a, on a very personalized and individualized learning plan, one that's flexible and one that spans from their seventh grade year through their first two years of college. And I believe that this is their secret sauce, this is how Vanguard is able to be so successful, is they have an individualized, a real personalized, individualized plan. I think a lot of char, charter schools claim that, but Vanguard truly has this and I've seen it and I've worked with it and I've, I've experienced it, but a very personalized, individualized learning plan from, from seventh grade through 12th grade or through, through post, post 12th grade, two years, that puts students on a pathway to accomplish their academic goals and students have a lot, a lot of choice in this matter. They could choose to earn an associate's degree if they'd like, they could choose to earn some college credit, they can choose to earn no college credit and just earn a Vanguard diploma. They can choose to focus this, these, these academic courses, these classes in high school and, and, and in, in college towards a, a specific career or an emphasis and, and there's several emphases that students are able to choose from that, that really focus these classes and, and this plan towards that. So it's, it's a, it's an awesome, it's an awesome program, an awesome school and, and there's a lot of really, really high-quality, loving, supporting individuals that, that teach and that work at this school that really, really want to see the success of their students. Moving on, I want to talk a little bit about this, this, the student body. I was very, very impressed with these students. I've been at many high schools, I've worked at many high schools. Most high schools, you see typical high school student behavior. Kids are wild, kids, you know, say crazy things, swear a lot, you know, there's typical fights or conflicts at, 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 at normal high schools. My time at Vanguard, I spent four months there. I think there was less than five disciplinary actions from, from students. Very, very little issues with, with student behavior. There's no bullying, zero bullying from, from what I experienced. There were no fights at, at this school. That's not typical in, in high schools, as we've all been there. There seems to be no gossiping or backbiting amongst the students, they, they have a genuine, genuine caring and, and love for each other. I've experienced that. I spent a lot of time talking to students about their academic goals and their dreams and their aspirations. They, they talked to me about their classes, taking college calculus and college-level chemistry in the same year. These are students that are, that are very, very academically minded. These are students that have dreams and goals and Vanguard is the, the way that they're able to accomplish those dreams and those goals. I often thought to myself while, while at this school, while, while experiencing this school, what, what happened if Vanguard would shut down? Where would these kids go back to school? Where would they go to school? Would they have that same opportunity that they have at Vanguard? Would they be placed on an individualized, personalized learning plan that, that, that put them on a journey to reach their academic goals through their first two years of college? And there's a lot of really good schools out in that side of the valley, but the answer to that question is no. They would not get the same experience that they are having at Vanguard Academy. They would not be, be provided an academic journey that, that, like they are at Vanguard. It's, it's, Vanguard is the, the mechanism that many of these students are going to be highly successful in life because they are, they have that opportunity at Vanguard. And so I was really impressed. I, I didn't even hear any swearing at, at Vanguard. I spent a lot of time with students out, you know, outside during lunch, you know, when they'd be throwing around the football and typically in schools, you're going to hear some swear words and these kids are great kids, they didn't, there was, there was zero, none of that, which was really impressive. And it really spoke to the, the culture of the school and how well that the administration and the teachers and, and really the board created this culture to where that's, you know, you just don't see that. I think students that have come into Vanguard from other programs have experienced it as well, that, you know, this is a school that's unlike other schools out there. The last group of people that I want to speak to was this government, the governing board of Vanguard. My very first meeting with the Vanguard governing board, I was a little nervous to go into, wanted to make sure that they knew I was there to support them and to help them and I didn't really know what to expect. And that first meeting, I think really, I feel like set the tone for what my experience was with this board for the, for the next four months that I was with them. And what I found was, was what Rachel found. I found them to be very genuine and very sincere in their willingness to meet the terms of their probation. Prior to my, my, my time and, and really just till a couple of months ago, I, I tried to stay clear from anything in the probation, I, you know, my, my, my main instructions really were to focus on the academic side of Vanguard and to support that and support the students in that, in that regard. And so I, I didn't have a, I didn't spend a lot of time with the probation letter or with the terms of probation. And so the first few meetings were really, really an opportunity for me to experience the Vanguard Academy board in a genuine and raw way without being influenced or biased by, you know, media reports or, or, you know, the, the, the probationary status or the terms of the probation. In that first meeting, there was an item that came up for, for, for vote and it was the, it was the renewal of the contract for the, for the, the food vendor. This was a, a contract that had come into question and there, I, I guess from the probation or from, you know, talks with state charter school board staff, there was concern that there could be some conflict of interest within this contract. And I believe the, the state charter school board staff had asked Vanguard to look at this contract again and, and rebid it and, 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 and vote on it again. And so I sat in this meeting and I listened to the discussion that the board had about this and they were put in a very precarious situation. This was November, November 8th or close to it, maybe November, maybe it was a week later, it wasn't too much time after I started. So we're well into the school year. This is a school that has a very, very high percentage of free and reduced lunch, students that are eligible for fee waivers, low socioeconomic school. And the board was put into a position where they're forced to choose whether or not they renew this contract and, and continue to, to provide food for, and, and lunch for their students or worry about having a conflict of interest at the, at the, with the, you know, in the, in the, in the, within the eyes of the state charter school board, I guess. The school talked about, the, the leadership team in that meeting talked about their due diligence and looking for other vendors. I know they contacted many catering companies out there and they got one other company to respond to a request for bid and it was a company that does provide lunch for schools in a similar way to, to what Vanguard was looking for. But their response was, "Hey, we'd love to help, but I'm sorry, we can't, we can't bid. We, we are over-capacitated, we don't have the capacity to, to, to be able to provide you. Hopefully in the, in the near, next few years, we'll be able to grow and, and build the capacity, but for now, we can't bid." And so the, the board was stuck in a position of, do we award the contract to a company that has perceived conflicts in which the state charter school board is asking us to, to rebid? Or do we go back to our student body and let them know that we can't feed them, that they're going to have to now provide their own lunch during the school day? And they, they, they rustled with this for, for some time and, and I listened to this discussion and ultimately they chose to, to make sure that their kids were fed every day and awarded that contract. They were with very much concern that, and knowing that, you know, this, this could be something that could get them in, in trouble or it could be perceived, there could be some perceived conflicts there. Obviously, in a situation like that, it's, it's hard to make a decision and I was, I was grateful that this board chose to, chose the students and, and, and chose to, to make sure that their students were fed through this year. Now, there's an opportunity, of course, to go back and, and, you know, at the end of a school year or whatnot to look at those kinds of relationships and see if that's the direction the school wants to continue to grow. But one of the other things that I, I thought was, was important was in order to help the state charter school board feel better with the decision that they made, the very difficult decision they made, they, they decided to award the contract for only one year, knowing that they would rebid that contract at the end of this year and, and good faith to show that the, the, to show and demonstrate to the state charter school board that this was a genuine and sincere effort to, to, to meet the terms, yet they were being placed in a really difficult situation. That meeting has been followed by many meetings with the Vanguard board and every single one of those meetings, I felt that they were sincere and genuine in, in wanting to make sure that they were meeting the terms of, of the probation and, 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 and very concerned with being able to satisfy the, the will of this board here so that they can remain, their school can remain open. Even up to the last meeting that I participated in, they, they expressed this concern. Even up to the last meeting that I participated in, um, they, they expressed this concern and, and, um, and it was genuine and sincere. My time in the past few months has, has gone from working on the academic side to really more focused towards, um, supporting the school and updating policies and making sure that their, the, the required policy, state policies are in place and those kinds of things. The administration has been very, um, very open and, and helpful in that. They, they've, they've demonstrated to me really, really strong leadership, although new to, uh, the, you know, the, the principal is new to, to education, is new to schools. But has a background in, in, uh, in systems and background in working in, in heavily regulated, uh, situations like schools, right? Um, and has, and to me, in my opinion, has demonstrated a really, really good, really, really strong leadership in, in being able to lead the school in, in a, in a, in a positive way. And, um, in a way that, uh, is, is really supportive to students and really supportive to the mission of the state charter school board. I don't have anything further. I am open to questions if, if the board has questions, but, um, that sums up my experience.
Thank you so much, Mr. Clark. We appreciate you, your work that you're doing with the school and, uh, the attitude and, uh, support that you, uh, brought into your work. Members, do you have questions of Mr. Clark? His work or maybe areas you think he could comment on that he hasn't, for instance? Member Smith?
I don't have any comments or questions. I just wanted to thank you and also, um, Anderson, yes, and, um, and everyone who has been there and, um, working so carefully and in such good faith to try to see the actual situation and to try to assist the school.
I do, I do have some recommendations. I, um, I, I, I feel it's important to, that if this, I feel it's important that this school continue to receive support from the state charter school board. You know, there, there are, there are, uh, uh, if you take the, this, the, the charter school system as a whole in Utah, there, there is a need of a lot of support out there. Um, all of our charter schools, um, in some way are deficient, um, in, in one way or another. And, and Vanguard's no different. Um, you know, they, they, they have struggles just like any other, uh, any other charter school that I've, I've been with or I've experienced or I've overseen, um, from, from this, from this, from this perspective as well. And they, they would definitely, uh, benefit from further support from this, this board and this staff. Um, I think the support that, that Brad and Rachel and I have, have given them has been helpful. And I think, uh, you know, if, if that were to continue, that would really, really put this board in a good, in a good position come six months from now, a year from now. Um, I think you would, um, I, I think it would be, uh, very, very helpful, um, as it would to many, many charter schools out there. But particularly Vanguard could benefit from that. So I wanted to, to put that out there as a recommendation, um, that, you know, if, if this board continues to authorize Vanguard at the end of this meeting, um, that, I think that would be a really important thing for them, um, to support them as they continue to grow and improve and, and, uh, grow in compliance. One of the things that, when I worked here at, uh, the state charter school board that we talked about in terms of compliance was supportive compliance, that when we find a school out of compliance, that we support them to compliance. That we help them and we, uh, we, we help them to grow. We, we find the tools that they need in order to, um, to become compliant. Vanguard is not the only non-compliant school out there in the charter community, as we know. There's lots of other ones. And so I, I, I want to make that known and I want to make it, it, uh, I want, I think it's important to, um, to understand that, um, the support that the board has given Vanguard has, has been a big help. And I think that continued support can, can even push the school and move the school further. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. That's very helpful. Uh, your recommendations are highly regarded by us and we appreciate the, um, nuanced way in which you've both given a report about progress, but also about perhaps the continued need for support. And our schools, we hope, benefit from the remediation and support that we give them, which, uh, most people don't realize, and I know you do, goes on behind the scenes as perhaps our, uh, our most, um, the, the activity to which we direct most of our resources. So that our schools that we authorize can be their best and, and do their best for students. So thank you very much for your report and for the work you're doing. We would like to invite at this time, uh, Mr. Brad Wilkinson to come up and provide a report to us. And we, uh, we appreciate, Mr. Wilkinson, your willingness to be here with us today and to provide this report, as well as the work that you've accomplished.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good morning. Thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Brad Wilkinson. I'm the current business administrator at Summit Academy Schools. I was selected to serve as the co-business administrator, uh, back in November as well. So I had been working alongside their team for four months. And in particular, uh, their current BA, John Williams, we've worked, uh, pretty closely. As I started this endeavor, um, members of, of the state charter school board, um, have kind of, I guess when I went into it, I didn't really have a roadmap of what I was looking for, what I was doing. I just was kind of given the, you know, use your expertise to support, help, uh, build, build efficiency. So I kind of went in and just started with that in mind. I just wanted, kind of like the other reports that have been given today, tried to understand Vanguard Academy, understand their policies, their procedures. Um, I read a lot of, uh, language, um, that you all have provided to them, uh, through their, uh, process. Read kind of the concerns that are out there. And my role was to better support and help their team financially, uh, to build better processes, to build efficiency, to, um, just support them. Uh, so I kind of dug in early on, looked through some things. I have a, a little bit of an audit background as well. Uh, so I just kind of selected like I would, um, as an auditor, even though I didn't have an audit approach to it. Selected some things to sample, to review, both from the income statement, from the balance sheet, uh, just to make sure that they're doing what their policies say that they should be doing, uh, that they're following, um, state law, uh, and so forth. So I kind of dug in and, and went that way. So a couple of the areas that I believe that I have supported them the most, uh, would be from a financial statement perspective. As I looked at it closely, looked at some of the documents that they had provided in their board meetings, um, early on, I felt personally that it was lacking, um, in terms of transparency, in terms of what the board was looking at as they would approve and take care of things, um, from a financial lens. It was more of a, a high-level document, uh, that would maybe take all of the object codes high-level, one hundreds, two hundreds, three hundreds, instead of breaking them out, uh, by every object that they had in their budget. So I helped them build a template, um, that was a little bit more detailed, a little bit deeper dive into the numbers, which also would alert the board, um, of where they might be over budget, where they might be under budget. Uh, so as things come to their attention that they need to approve, they have a better idea of, do they have the capacity, uh, financially to do those things? Um, it's, it's important to demonstrate that as you ask for approval, you seek for things from your board is to ensure they have the, the whole picture financially in order to make a sound decision that could impact them not only in the current year, but potentially in, in a multi-year, um, outlook. Uh, so that was the biggest area that I think I have provided the, the support to them. Um, and then also from a budget perspective, right now, of course, we're, we're dealing with, uh, the, we're kind of in that world where we're in a, a two-year dive where we're, we're working in the FY23 year, but also trying to, to plan and prepare for FY24. Uh, so I've kind of worked with John to understand their budget practice, their budget process. I think early on, as I looked, I, I personally felt like they weren't bringing enough budget revisions to the board. Obviously budget, budgets are very fluid. They change probably daily, um, definitely monthly. Um, and so it's important that as those things change, uh, that you alert your, your board and, and your financial team um, of what those changes are, what they might be. So I kind of helped them understand the importance of that and sharing that information. Um, and just trying to, trying to understand a, a big picture of, of how to better budget plan, budget develop, um, and, and that kind of process. So I think, I think personally, those are the two things I have focused on the most. As I mentioned, I have, I have taken a deep dive into the financials in terms of compliance, in terms of, are they following generally accepted accounting principles? Are they following their, their fiscal policies and procedures? And I would report to you that, um, from that perspective, I felt like everything looked fine. Keeping in mind, it was just a sample. Um, I haven't tested or selected everything in their financials. But from a sample perspective, um, in terms of compliance, generally kept, accepted accounting principles and, and policies, they are meeting those. With the one caveat that I do understand the concerns with the RFP process and the conflict of interests. Just like, uh, Michael Clark, I, I have not been too involved in the RFP process. I understand the concerns. I read through them. I've had several conversations with their administrative team of what those concerns are, how they're going about resolving them. I was, I think early on was going to be one of the, uh, scorers on, on the most recent RFPs that they did. I think we took a deeper dive and decided to step back and, and ensure that they were following their, their true process. Um, and so we stayed out of that. But from my understanding is, yes, in November, they did do a couple new RFPs as, at the request of this board. Um, and I think at the end of the day, the, the same outcome, um, was still there. Um, I think the effort was there, the attempt to free themselves from conflict of interest was there, although the outcome was the same. The most recent RFPs that they've done, uh, for the GPS and a few of their other things, from my understanding and, and communications I have had, they have been able to award those without any conflict of interest. Uh, so from my perspective on that, yes, there are some, some issues that still exist. But I think improvements are being made and I think they're going toward a direction of, of trying to resolve those and putting forth their best effort to, uh, free themselves from any conflict. The only other areas of, of concern that I have, um, yes, the, the RFP and the, and the conflict of interest, I do share those, those same concerns. The only other, um, major concern I have is, is really, and it, it's not a concern, it's just a, a best practice in my perspective, is there are some current potential liabilities that they have on their books, whether that be through legal. Also, I've talked to them at, at a pretty extensive length about, um, some new monies that a lot of, uh, entities are getting, uh, with the COVID relief, um, is the ERC money. Uh, that a lot of, you know, our, my own charter school has, um, applied for and received funds, uh, for that due to the, the impact that COVID had put on schools and charter schools in particular. They did receive that money, but I take a pretty conservative approach until the IRS has finished their audit process. Our, our, our practice is to not touch that money, not use that money until those, um, audits and reviews are done. And we've kind of talked about that, uh, with the Vanguard team, uh, at length. Um, and I think their process is to, you know, they are, they are in use of that money. Uh, maybe not all of it, but I think they are planning to use most of that money in the current year. If anything were to, you know, through an audit, money was owed back, uh, their approach was to use their reserves, uh, which is, is a typical practice. We, we have those things in reserves for, for things that you're unexpected, for economic uncertainties, things like that. So it's not necessarily a terrible thing. Uh, but we have talked at length about, um, legal issues, other liabilities, ERC, and not trying to plan to use reserves for all of the above. Um, a- as you do that and you start to use them for, for everything that might come up, you could find yourself in a situation where your bottom line reserve number is not as high as you would expect and trying to meet, you know, certain days of cash on hand and so forth. Uh, so trying to work with them to build, uh, what could potentially be pu- put into their current year budget, um, if things were to have to be paid back, uh, putting a line item in there that potentially if that were to, to be paid back, we, we could, we could expense that in the current year versus using a, a, a bottom line reserve number. Um, and just trying to work with them on that. So if everything were to happen and, and a, a worst-case scenario, they owed everything back at once, it wouldn't hurt them, uh, from a cash flow perspective. So those were the two areas of concern that I've had overall that, that I've kind of worked with them. But all, all in all, it's been a good experience. I think, I hope that I've been, uh, a support to them and helped them, um, in areas of, of maybe deficiency. Not that anything was, you know, super, you know, deficient, but there were some areas that I think they could improve upon, uh, mainly in the, in the transparency role of financial statements and, and how they communicate that to stakeholders and to the board and to the public. But happy to report, I think as I've worked closely with John, uh, they've provided me everything that, that I've asked for. Um, and they are working towards improving, um, in those areas that I had concerns. So I don't want to, financials are, are very exciting to me. I know they're boring to talk about, so I don't want to bore you to death. Uh, but if you, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer anything that you have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wilkinson, both for the work you're doing and for the support that, uh, for coming and giving this report and for the, the, you know, unbiased and goodwill support that you've been giving to the school. Members, do you have questions? I, I actually do have one, but I'll defer to another member first if, okay. In some ways, Mr. Wilkinson, like it or not, you're a little bit more in the hot seat than perhaps the other two. Because, uh, uh, given the nature of the deficiencies that we have, um, we've identified.
Sure.
And of the, uh, level of concern that we've had about those particular deficiencies. And, and maybe you can't answer this question, not because you're unwilling, but because you just don't have an answer. But I would like to pose it anyway, if you, if you would, um, indulge me. I've long wondered and not really been able to have a satisfactory answer to my mind, uh, as I've contemplated the school's resolution of these deficiencies, which is the hoped-for goal. As to what your opinion would be, and you've worked in finance, school finance for a long time, as to whether or not the conflicts of interest that, um, that we have, have concerns about, I realize you, you may or may not agree with our, uh, description of that, can be solved with processes alone as opposed to, um, a, a shakeup of personnel. And, you know, I, I love transparent processes and I think they can go a long way and sometimes they can go all the way. Uh, good processes, as you've pointed out, whether it's the processes related to the financial statements or to the way that they go about approving and reporting on a budget, to the way that, um, they manage liabilities and risks financially within the institution. All those are so important. Processes, systems that are good can almost always resolve problems. And I'm, I'm that hopeful, optimistic person. But they can also reach a limit. Would your personal, professional opinion be that ultimately processes would be able to resolve the conflicts related to money and its expenditure?
So in the accounting world, um, we call them internal controls. Internal controls, a lot of the time we look at it, an internal control should be something implemented that the, the, like, let's use a, a software, for example. That software in itself should prevent somebody or something from doing something that they should not be. When you rely on people, um, if, if people are your control to ensure something does or doesn't happen, obviously we're imperfect people and things will get missed. So it, I guess to answer your question is it, it depends on the type of control you have in place. Um, if, if you are relying heavily on, on individuals and administrators and business administrators alone to ensure things don't happen, um, I think we're professional enough to say, we do our best. A 95% chance, we're going to make sure everything's done the way it should be, uh, following procurement law, following everything. But unless you have, uh, something in place that will prevent someone from doing something, it, it probably won't be a, a sure thing. So again, when I, when I talk, I, I think about software, um, you know, there should be something where if people want to, to purchase something or do something that they shouldn't be, there should be something built into that software that would physically prevent them from doing it versus someone saying, you can't do that. Because obviously as I, as, as an administrator might turn to look this way, someone may just do it anyways. So, yeah, I, I think the processes help for sure. Um, and you have to have them. You have to have fiscal policies and procedures in place. But it, it might not, it might not catch everything.
Well, and I appreciate the, uh, the very professional way you've delineated that for us because of course, of course, ultimately, that would be true of any school, not just Vanguard. And even though that's the specific experience that you're reporting on, I think it's helpful for us to see through a broader lens, ways that our schools, and in this case Vanguard, could resolve those deficiencies to the point at which we would feel comfortable continuing to authorize them to receive public monies. And I think your focus on the controls is a very wise one and kind of helps me, at least, to align my thinking as I look toward the resolution of those deficiencies. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Members, do you have any questions before we move to our next agenda item? Okay. Thank you again. We appreciate it. Wow, we are just a few minutes late, which is kind of, we started a little late, so I think we're making up some time, and that's wonderful. And we appreciate the thorough reports that were given and, more importantly, the thorough work that's being done. It was our stated and true intent, genuine intent, to provide some really great people who were experts in certain areas to support Vanguard in the resolution of deficiencies that we as a board had identified. And I think that anybody here and/or listening in the general public can see that these are some very quality individuals, both in terms of their integrity but also in terms of their expertise. And so we appreciate the continued work that is being done with the school to support best practices. And again, thank Ms. Anderson, Mr. Clark, and Mr. Wilkinson for their good work with Vanguard. And we also appreciate the school's welcoming of them, and each of them expressed in one way or another a collegial relationship with their counterparts at the school. And Mr. Clark went so far as to say, from the moment he entered the school, he felt that he was welcome. And that's very good for us to know. We appreciate that the school would extend a welcome to some people that maybe they didn't feel comfortable initially having come into the school, in spite of our good intentions, and I think in spite of the school's intentions as well. So thank you for welcoming those individuals in and working alongside them in a collegial fashion. At this time, we have an opportunity to consider the, a report from our staff that is very brief, and the, an opportunity to hear from the school about two amendment requests that they've made of our board, as well as just the progress in resolving the deficiencies. And we've had such a positive, I think, segment prior to this, so I don't want my remarks to in any way dampen that. But I've noticed in responses, because we're privy to reading responses from the school that are given to staff, and we appreciate that, because we want to be kept in the loop. We want to understand how the school perceives its own progress being made on resolving these deficiencies. That's very important to us as a board. And so we read those responses very, in very great detail and sometimes multiple times, try to understand. And as Vanguard administration and board members know, those responses have been very lengthy. But we appreciate that. This helps us to stay in the loop along with our staff and to support each other in what it looks like going forward. One of the things I noted in quite a number of the responses, and it's not incorrect, but I just want to contextualize it, and that is, the school has often said, you know, even your own board members have noted that there's progress being made. That is absolutely true. We have, I remember even as much as, as long ago as a year, saying to representatives from Vanguard, giving a report to us, that, for instance, an example, that even that far back, the school had worked with the procurement division of the Utah State Board of Education and of the state to implement processes for procurement that were in alignment with how those offices describe best practices. That is a really great step. I don't think anybody in their right mind would say otherwise. That's just a great step. Progress toward resolution nevertheless is not resolution. And again, I don't want to be negative. I simply want to say that as we consider steps toward progress, let's acknowledge those, let's celebrate those. But ultimately, the school needs to satisfy this board that authorized it, that this board should continue allowing it to receive and spend public monies. So those deficiencies must be resolved. And of course, the only way they can be resolved is by great progress toward resolution. But don't conflate those two, if you would. And also, don't expect us to conflate those two in the decisions we make. We want these deficiencies resolved. But do we applaud progress? Do we think that takes us a step closer? Absolutely. 100%. Are we hopeful that these deficiencies will be fully resolved? 100% we are. And that, I think, has come out in all of our public meetings. I know I'm sort of speaking for the board when I say that, but I don't think that I'm errantly doing that because I've been here, I've listened to what other board members have said, and there's a genuine desire for these deficiencies to be resolved. So with that in mind, I would ask Director Lambert, or whichever member of your staff, is going to give us a brief statement or two to do that at this time.
So Liz Bunker, our remediation coordinator, she's just going to let you know and those in the audience of just where we're at and the requests that Vanguard has made.
Thank you, Director Lambert, and Vice Chair Phillips, so much. So we are here to address Vanguard's probation. Vanguard has resolved one of the five deficiencies. Vanguard has not followed the path to remediate the remaining four deficiencies offered by the SCSB. Instead, Vanguard has proposed an alternative path. To ensure that the alternative path is successful, we may want to consider allowing Vanguard additional time to resolve the deficiencies. Vanguard has requested an extension of their probation as allowable under R277553, which states, "A school may request a single extension of no more than six months from an authorizer to comply with the terms of the written plan." Their board is here today to present two amendment requests to their charter agreement related to their proposal to remediate the deficiencies. So, yeah, I'll turn the time back to you, Vice Chair Phillips. Thank you.
We assume that there are some representatives from the school who would like to come forward at this time and discuss these amendment requests, as well as any other relevant information. So please come forward and we hope we have enough, yep, we do, we have enough seats. Well, maybe not. You may have to take turns. But please fill in where you can, and then we'll have introductions. And then as others need to speak, maybe you could yield the table and the microphone to those individuals, and we could have them also introduce themselves, rather. And we know that we know some of you, you've been here before, others of you might be new faces. But for the sake of those who are listening online, we would like some introductions. And maybe we could start Ms. Llewellyn with, oh, yes, very well, right here then. Okay.
Joy Palmer, Curriculum Director.
Debbie Llewellyn, Vanguard Board Member.
Robert Stewart with the Law from Foley and Lardner, counsel for Vanguard.
Grace Mitchell, Board Treasurer.
I'm Eric Freeman. I'm the board chair at Vanguard.
Brad Nelson, Board Member.
Charles Reynolds, School Director.
Thank you very much for being here with us today and supporting this presentation and allowing us to have a very textured and thorough understanding of the measures you've taken to resolve these deficiencies. And I'll leave it to you to decide who speaks when to us, and then we will go ahead and ask questions and discuss.
Vice Chair Phillips, Dr. Evans is helping Ms. Palmer present, they have a presentation as well, so.
Thanks for the update on that. All right. We are patient.
Maybe as the presentation is coming up, then we just, on behalf of the Vanguard Board and the school, then we want to thank the State Charter School Board for allowing us to come and present on these deficiencies. And I appreciated also the remarks of the support people that you guys have put into place to help Vanguard. And we're very hopeful that the things we're putting into place now will continue on that progression to resolving these things. And so we appreciate the consideration by the State Charter Board, and we hope that we can continue to improve and continue to work with the Charter Board in resolving and getting a better school for our students. Ultimately, we're serving these students. And we were also told that the board wanted to see more of our board members here and more faces. And so in this presentation, we're going to have different board members present on different slides. And we've got all, we've got eight of the nine board members here in attendance today. One of them had a family emergency that they were planning on coming, but they had to go attend to that family emergency. And I think we were given 90 minutes on the agenda. I don't think our presentation will even take half that amount of time. And we hope there will be some good dialogue between the board and us. If there's any questions or any clarification that we need to provide, then we're happy to provide that to the board.
Thank you. And we did anticipate that time slot to be part of our discussion and part of our asking and answering of questions between the school and the board. So don't feel in any way obligated to take more time than whatever you've prepared.
Thank you.
The Wi-Fi wouldn't let us actually connect to the screen, so we're trying to troubleshoot something else.
What we'd like to do while we're kind of setting this up, because there are those, both here, members of the public as well as board members, who may appreciate a brief recess of five minutes to access the restroom or drinks or whatever you need to do. So let's rejoin at 10:02, and that gives us time to get our technology up and going
So like Grace mentioned, about a year ago, based upon the recommendation of the Board here, then we did add a couple of new Board members. It was in April of 2022. The new Board members were Ben Robinson and Dan Jessup, both of whom bringing some good real-world experience to the Board. Have been great additions, great Board members. And then again, back in October of 2022, due to some of the pressure from the state, then our Board Chair and our Board Vice Chair did step down. And to replace those two vacancies of our Board, we hired two, I call them blue-chip Board members because they've really been fantastic. Debbie Llewellyn, she's the Director of Operations at the Utah Association of Public Charter Schools. She's a former Board Chair for Mountainville Academy, and she's the former Board Member for Endeavor Hall. So brings a wealth of experience, knowledge of charter schools, and she's just a good, good person, good-hearted person, but great additions. And the next person is Brad Nielsen. I think you guys are all familiar with Spectrum Academy. I noticed you guys highlighted the Business Manager for Spectrum Academy in your March newsletter. Well, Brad's the Executive Director of Finance and Development for Spectrum Academy. He's also the former Board Chair for the Utah Association of Public Charter Schools. Again, brings a lot of wealth, a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience. He's been a great addition to our Board. And I think he's speaking to us next.
I want to go actually off-script for a second and give a little background. When Royce at the UAPCS called me and asked me if I would be willing to be considered for the Board of Vanguard, I was a little kind of surprised because I'd barely even heard of Vanguard before. I knew nobody there. I didn't know what the school was. I didn't know what it was about and had no association with them whatsoever. And as he explained the situation, I said, "Well, I'd be willing to use my experience to help if I can, but I want you to know that if there is anything that I find that is untoward or unethical, I will be the first one to scream." And if that's what you want, I'm willing to do that. So I got a call and an interview with the, with the Board of Vanguard for consideration. And I pretty much told them the same thing. I was willing to help and to lend my, whatever experience I could. But if there was anything that was being, trying to be hid or was anything that, where they were trying to use my reputation to further something that was not reputable, then I would be their worst enemy. "Do you really want me on the Board?" is what I said. And so a few weeks later, I got a call, I was surprised, actually, when I got it. In fact, I told my wife, I said, "After that experience, I should write a book on how to do a bad job interview because it was, it was terrible." All the things you don't want to say. But they did ask me to be on the Board under those circum, under those situations, circumstances, and I, I agreed to do that. The things that we're about to present here are not all my ideas, and they are ideas of collectively from the Board. And when ideas were presented to try to solve the deficiencies and solve the issues at the school, they were met with openness and understanding and trying to, in a, in a spirit of, "Let's get this, let's get this right." And I'm, I'm, I'm pretty proud of that and of, of think that what we are proposing will put us down that path. And in the light of what we're asking for, which is an extension, is kind of almost exactly in line with Co-Chairs Phillips' remarks about there's a difference between implementation of policy and then the practice and the results of those policies. What we're asking for is the, is to exhibit our policies that we're presenting and what we're trying to do. And then
Please proceed, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go right into the next slide. And so, as has been said before, Vanguard is a very successful charter school. We're successfully educating our students. We are financially stable and we are meeting and exceeding our charter goals. And we're going to go into these points in detail in the following slides, so go on. So the first point, successfully educating our students. Like it's been brought out earlier in the meeting today, we were given a grade level A on the Utah State Board of Education website, and we're very proud of that achievement for Vanguard. On the U.S. News and World Report, we've been ranked 16 out of 50 high school charter schools in Utah. Our staff at Vanguard has done a great job in partnering with Salt Lake Community College, Snow College, and the University of Utah, and we're offering 100 different concurrent enrollment courses at Vanguard. And through those courses, we've got 1,232 individual students that are, not individual students, but enrollments in the courses. We've got 236 students that participated in concurrent enrollment courses in the fall of '22, and then 212 that are participating this spring in 2023. And this year, we will have 72 graduating students, and 62 of those 72 are first-generation college students. And almost every student that graduates Vanguard, when, as they graduate high school, then they are a college student because they're enrolling in these colleges and getting their college credits. Go to the next slide, please. The next item is we're financially stable. And so, we've got the Utah State metrics here, and the state recommendation or requirement there, and then what Vanguard is doing. And so, for example, we've got, the state says we need to have 30 days cash on hand. Vanguard has 129 days cash on hand. They say our debt-to-asset ratio should be less than one, we're .85, and the current ratio is, should be greater than one, we're 1.2. And again, there's, there have been no material findings in any audits that we have received. And so, we've been financially stable since inception, and we plan on to continue to do this. I'll turn it over to Grace for the next slides.
Thank you. So what I would like to do is I would get, like to give a little bit of background on the probation. Originally, we received the probation letter on September 2nd of 2022, and it identified three deficiencies. One with the conflict of interest with perceived relationships, one with our CMP food contract, and also one with our board governance and open and public meetings. And then, as we were working through that, we were also sent an amended probation letter on October 25th that addressed two additional deficiencies regarding material misrepresentations and in our enrollment processes. And then, in November, as you all well know, the SCSB-appointed Michael Clark is our co-director, Brad Wilkinson is our finance director, and Rachel Anderson is our board mentor, and they have been very helpful. We have appreciated that. In our initial corrective action, so the staff required us to, the staff required us to provide all information and documents as requested, and provide all the actions to correct deficiencies and disclose all the employee and board members' relationships. So in doing this, we provided thousands of documents to the SCSB staff. We also worked with Brad Wilkinson to provide him with all the information that he asked for. We also provided the Utah State Auditor's Office with all the, the information that they requested. We restructured and implemented new policies and procedures regarding procurement, and we created an extensive conflict of interest summary that identified all the relationships in the procurement process. So, as you can see, we're, we're really working hard to resolve the concerns of the SCSB board, and we believe that we are doing just that, and we have taken this very seriously. Some additional, some additional corrective actions that we also did is we identified each individual in, that was involved in the procurement process. We required each one of these individuals to complete a conflict of interest disclosure statement, and we used our extensive conflict of interest summary to ensure that any of the individuals that were in the procurement, involved in the procurement process, that they were not conflicted, perceived, or whatever. Also, we appointed two new board members last April. And then, again, we appointed two new board members. I think it was in October, September or October. And these board members have actually been a great strength to our board. By doing this, we, it resulted in four new board members who were not members of any perceived conflicting organization. We also created an oversight procurement committee. And that consists of five Vanguard board members, four of which aren't any members of any perceived conflicting organization. And that procurement oversight committee oversees any procurement purchases or services that are over $5,000. So we have completely restructured our procurement process and have been using it successfully.
So like Grace mentioned, about a year ago, based upon the recommendation of the board here, then we did add a couple of new board members. It was in April of 2022. The new board members were Ben Robinson and Dan Jessup, both of them bringing some good real-world experience to the board, have been great additions, great board members. And then, again, back in October of 2022, due to some of the pressure from the state, then our board chair and our board vice chair did step down, and to replace those two vacancies of our board, we hired two, I call them blue-chip board members because they've really been fantastic. Debbie Llewellyn, she's the Director of Operations at the Utah Association of Public Charter Schools. She's a former board chair for Mountainville Academy, and she's the former board member for Endeavor Hall. So brings a wealth of experience, knowledge of charter schools, and she's just a good, good person, good-hearted person, but great additions. And the next person is Brad Nielsen. I think you guys are all familiar with Spectrum Academy. I noticed you guys highlighted the business manager for Spectrum Academy in your March newsletter. Well, Brad's the Executive Director of Finance and Development for Spectrum Academy. He's also the former board chair for the Utah Association of Public Charter Schools. Again, brings a lot of wealth, a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience. He's been a great addition to our board. And I think he's speaking to us next.
I want to go actually off-script for a second and give a little background. When Royce at the UAPCS called me and asked me if I would be willing to be considered for the board of Vanguard, I was a little kind of surprised because I'd barely even heard of Vanguard before. I knew nobody there. I didn't know what the school was. I didn't know what it was about, and had no association with them whatsoever. And as he explained the situation, I said, "Well, I'd be willing to use my experience to help if I can, but I want you to know that if there is anything that I find that is untoward or unethical, I will be the first one to scream. And if that's what you want, I'm willing to do that." So I got a call and an interview with the, with the board of Vanguard for consideration, and I pretty much told him the same thing. I was willing to help and to lend my, whatever experience I could, but if there was anything that was being, trying to be hid, or was anything that, where they were trying to use my reputation to further something that was not reputable, then I would be their worst enemy. "Do you really want me on the board?" is what I said. And so, a few weeks later, I got a call, I was surprised, actually, when I got it. In fact, I told my wife, I said, "After that experience, I should write a book on how to do a bad job interview," because it was, it was terrible, all the things you don't want to say. But they did ask me to be on the board under those circum, under those situations, circumstances, and I, I agreed to do that. The things that we're about to present here are not all my ideas, and they are ideas of collectively from the board. And when ideas were presented to try to solve the deficiencies and solve the issues at the school, they were met with openness and understanding and trying to, in a, in a spirit of, "Let's get this, let's get this right." And I'm, I'm, I'm pretty proud of that and of, think that what we are proposing will put us down that path. And in the light of what we're asking for, which is an extension, is kind of almost exactly in line with Co-Chairs Phillips' remarks about, there's a difference between implementation of policy and then the practice and the results of those policies. What we're asking for is the, is to exhibit our policies that we're presenting and what we're trying to do, and then the extension of time to say, "Watch us do it. Let us prove that we're, we're doing what we said we would do, and that these, these policies and procedures and changes will make true change and affect true change." So in light of that, what we've done is we passed a new procurement policy, which created a new procurement and compliance officer position. And what that position is, is it is somebody who is completely non-conflicted. From the outside, we have posted the position now that we're looking for, for somebody that will oversee the entire process of procurement. So when somebody has a purchase request, it goes to the procurement officer, and I, it was, my, I suggested it's not just procurement, it's compliance. It's a procurement compliance officer, and he processes that, depending on what it was, the size of it, and what it would, needs to be, whether it's just approved by them, or whether it's a, goes into bidding, or whether it goes into an RFP, whatever. They would take it through the entire process of whatever thing it would be. And so, we are removing people that, for some reason, are perceived conflict in any further procurement activities. So now, the director is not the person, the finance person is not the person that is directing procurement activities, it is this procurement officer that is doing it. This exists within district schools all over the place. It's not a position that is typical in, in, in charter schools, primarily because of the economies of scale and the size and that kind of thing. Frankly, I'm thinking very seriously of implementing this in our own school, but this is one of the things that I think is probably one of the key pieces. When you talk about implementing the policies, is they're being implemented by somebody that is specifically tasked to be in compliance with procurement policy, or procurement law and our own policy. So that's what, what that piece is. The new procurement, second part is the new procurement policy also requires Vanguard to use vendors from the state-approved vendor list whenever possible. That is something I've never seen a charter school do before, but it is, again, to try to bring above reproach, and if there is a vendor on the state-approved vendor list, which we all know if we choose one of those, that it circumvents other procurement procedures, then that's our first go-to. If they're not, then we go through the procurement process as either by policy and by law. So that's part that is a, a new procedure. The next one is to implement a procurement process called, created with the senior auditor of the Utah State Procurement Division, that includes a blind evaluation process. This was mentioned, that we've worked closely with procurement experts within the state and when the USBE as well, to development of a process, and we'll, we'll highlight what that process is as we go through here. Second thing, or the last thing, fourth thing is, is we've rebid contracts previously identified by the charter board that require an RFP process. And we, some of those we've accomplished, and some of those we're still going through. And I want to, I want to say that we're going through this, and we want to prove that we can do this, and that, and that these things are being effective, but they're already being done. And as part of that, I've been involved, as well as others, in the, as we'll talk about, the procurement committee that's been performed. So not only will there be a separate compliance procurement officer, it actually doesn't, it goes to the procurement committee on the board that is also non-conflicted, so you've got a double, a blind checkpoint for any procurement process. Which, these processes of going through the, the food service contract that was, has been done again, and will be done for next year, using this process and procedure. The next thing is we've successfully, as I've said, completed RFPs according to these new procedures for the classroom technology and GPS software, which is graduation performance. What does GPS stand for?
Progress.
Progress, that's what it is, sorry. Software, which I think is incredibly innovative, frankly. And then also, we, we amended bylaws to align with the charter agreement and submitted to the charter staff, board staff, and will submit again, once we're permitted. Those things, we, they wanted us to work more on comply, or corrective issues rather than general charter amendments. We've also issued RFPs for new business management company or individual. That's another thing that I want to highlight. So, from a perceived or actual conflict, having the financial management, we are now have an RFP to take our financial management out of house. So one of the outside financial management, charter school financial management companies will be awarded, or if there is an individual that's out there that will come up and, you know, we can find that's equally qualified, but we are taking financial management out of the internal people, I guess you want to say, that, that are currently here. So not only is the procurement process being taken out, also the financial management process is also being taken out, out of house, or out of the existing management structure. I think that's an incredible, again, balance and check. And it's also, I want to say, and I think both Michael and Brad Wilkerson said this, is that this is not in, in reflection to John Williams and his management. We have passed every audit, every scrutiny of, of financial management, but if there is concern and question about how things are being, how procurement is being influenced from the inside, that's going to, again, make another point to can, to remove that away from, from the process. So I, I just want to state that, that John Williams has, in my opinion, done a great job, and in fact, we'd like him to come to work for us, but anyway. The last thing, if we switch slides, on the charter amendment, this is the, I'll, rather than go through that, but in the charter amendment, it does talk about the procurement oversight committee, five board members. Those members, if you skip down, are listed there to, as initial members. The process is, is that all things that meet the criteria for that procurement that goes up to any kind of bid or RFP process will be, will be approved by the procurement oversight committee. Oh, which actually, one other mention, point I want to back up, the procurement compliance officer will report directly to the procurement oversight committee, not to the director or anybody else on staff. They will report to the non-conflicted procurement oversight committee. So it is, again, another step of protection, I guess, if you want to use that, that term. And, and they will review, point number two is review those things that are decisions of $5,000 or more, which is what our procurement policy is. And then, the last point is that if any member of the procurement oversight committee is, has an actual or protect, potential conflict, then they'll be either replaced or removed, and that will assure that that oversight committee is always in a non-conflicted status. So those are the things that we are asking to, to implement, or that we have implemented, and then we are asking to show and to prove that these things can make significant change. And in my opinion, being in charter school management for the last 13 years, I don't know, I think this will give this charter school the best procurement process of any charter school in the state, because this has been looked at in such an intense way, and looked at from every angle, that this is going to be the best procurement process in the, of any charter school in the state. Next.
Hi, I just gonna, I just want to say that when they asked me to come and be on this board, I was a little bit reluctant because I'd never been on a board before, and, you know, and I, I oversee a countertop company, and so I spent a lot of time at work, but I just decided that, you know, I did need to broaden my horizons here and see what it's all about, because I've had a lot of kids in school, and I've never really seen the background, and seen what everybody that, the boards do. So I really appreciate our board and the time that they've spent, and I appreciate you guys' time, and appreciate you guys really a lot, because it's really been insightful about what you guys really go through. So, I just wanted to say that. And I want to talk a little bit more about the procurement officer. It's pretty much, it's pretty much the, reiterating a lot of what Brad has said, that, that we're going to hire a, a procurement officer, and he's going to be hired by the board directors, and he shall report directly to the oversight committee. And he shall oversee and review all purchases and procurements on behalf of Vanguard Academy to ensure that the procurement process complies with all federal statutes, rules, and local LEA policies. The officer shall ensure that each procurement is completed in a fair process, free of all influences and/or conflicts of interest, and oversee the preparation and open fair administration.
No previous.
What's that? Okay. Of all RFPs. Sorry about that. And the purchases over $1,000 must be approved by the procurement officer, and if the procurement officer's not available, purchase shall be approved by a non-conflicted member of the procurement oversight committee, which I am a member of. Documentation of the solicitation of at least two quotes or reference to the exemption of those requirements must be attached. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, as part of the policy to make it clear and open for, and as close as possibly can even be met to match the state requirements, is we will use a state-preferred vendor list on all purchases over $50,000, goods and services. And again, if there's not a preferred vendor available, then we'll put it out for competitive bid, with the procurement officer overseeing the RFP from start to finish. And the over, the procurement oversight committee, which I'm a member of, will also review and score those bids. Unless there's an exception, then for services over $50,000, you, we'll use the appropriate process to complete that. We, the state-approved, this, the next slide just talks about the state-approved vendor list will be used, and we'll follow the, the terms and agreements of the contract without sedis, and perhaps without soliciting additional, or procurement options unless the state-preferred provider's not available. So that makes this, the policy easy to follow, and according to state, state code. And this is all proposed in our policies that we're asking for review on. The next slide talks about deficiency number two that was presented to Vanguard, the next.
Right on here.
Yeah.
There we go.
And that was on the child nutrition lunch program, and we understand that one is resolved, so we can take that one off the list.
Okay, then the next deficiency was in regard to the Open and Public Meeting Act. And our initial corrective action, can you go, oh, it's still taking, it's time to show up. Try going one more. Okay. Our initial corrective action was that we provided all email and text message, anything that was requested, we have provided. We have successfully held at least monthly governing board meetings that are compliant with OPA, and all meetings since the unidentified meeting have been properly noticed. Additional corrective actions taken. We have received extensive Open and Public Meetings Act, Meetings Act and procurement training from the Utah Association of Public Charter Schools in a board meeting on November 22nd, which you can listen to. We've also circulated training materials and received, received from the Attorney General's office to each board member. We've conducted compliant board meetings at least once a month during probation, and received additional training from our assigned board mentor. And if I can just mention, I have, I myself personally stepped in to notice those meetings. So I had had training on this in the past, I'd done it for many, many years, and as our school, I see that the school needed help. I carry a lot of responsibilities at the school, but I have noticed all of those meetings myself, and I, I wholeheartedly agree, Member Phillips, with your comments on stability. I, I remember your one in a past meeting, and I really appreciate that perspective quite a bit. Thank you for your comments there, and I, and if it's all right for me to share a perspective of mine, and, and not in any way, I don't intend to disparage anyone at all. I know everyone in this effort is doing their very best. I've, as I've done that at, at great cost to my, my family and my, my evening life at home, the letters we receive from staff do say that the effort is technical and not meaningful. Sorry, I'm an emotional person. Michael was right when he said there's a lot of love in the school. I, I come from the heart and I speak from the heart, and I am very genuine, and sometimes it comes out in tears. But I, I hope you don't mind me sharing a little bit personal, but I have a son who's three years old, who is disabled, and his routines matter a lot to him. And when I come home and I've got a board meeting, I drop him off and I leave, and when he sees me reach for the keys and he cries, and sometimes he screams. And with that, I go and I leave, and I come to the school in the evening hours, and I think I had mentioned to, I don't remember if I told this board or the other ones, my, my respect for Charles Reynolds as a director, he has, Michael mentioned how skilled he is, and I agree with that. He has made said I can go home to my kids so much more. But that is the cost that I am giving up to come to the school and make sure that we are in compliance. It means a lot to me. And so, when I, when I read in the letter that also calls for me to lose my job, that my efforts have been technical and not meaningful, I don't understand. And I, I apologize for my lack of understanding. I do think I'm an educated individual, I can usually grasp on things, but I don't understand how this is still a deficiency. I'm not trying to, I, I apologize for the tears. But I, I just wanted to point out, there have been exhaustive efforts to meet every request from staff, and some of those board meetings that Rachel Anderson spoke to, that we're having the in-between meetings, have been because we get a response from staff, and in order to meet it timely, we do hold another meeting just to address that item. And then we did, I myself have been making the changes that she asked for. So when we have those in-between meetings, and I have been taking off the other things that we usually go through, like budget and all that kind of stuff, and just address the specific item. But I, as a personal request, I, and you said progress and everything, I, I don't understand how else to remedy it besides the, the 15 already successfully noticed meetings. And I do stay at the school, like, that night of the meeting generally, once the meeting is over, I will stay, and I post the recording, and our board chair has, will review the meeting minutes, and I post those that night as well. There's been a couple times where we've had back-to-back meetings because of trying to be responsive, and where I haven't posted that night, but they've all been within the time window. So I appreciate you listening to that, and I apologize for the, the chairs, I don't mean to, and, and I, I did have one other, some of the, some of the comments about student participation that we have received, not from the board, I know, but as about genuineness, and I did just want to mention, I did walk up with our first student who spoke in public comment, because she was very nervous, and she said she'd feel more comfortable as I was with her, and I didn't want you to think that hers wasn't heartfelt and her, her dad would be here today if he could be, and I think that'll be mentioned later. But thank you for listening to me.
If I could just interject before, if, I don't know if there's another slide, but, you know, one of the reasons that we have these kinds of meetings is so that, and, and maybe you've experienced this before, when, when you send an email to someone, when you write a text to someone, it's often hard to know the tone, right? And communication is a funny thing. As an administrator of a school for many years, I, I know that even just listening to people report on their experiences, who have all been in the same room that I too have been in, there are as many perspectives as there are people. And so, one of the reasons that it's very, very important for us to have you come and talk to us is so that we can hear the very thing you said. We need to know different perspectives. Ours is, ours is, among other things, a monitoring and accountability board, as well as a supportive board, and an authorizing board. But for us to, to understand how that sounded to you, it's important for us. And so, we, that's the whole reason you're in here, is to give us context, not, board and staff, right? And, and for us to give you some context, too. I've taken liberties during this meeting to kind of contextualize some of the things that you, that you said in responses as a school, but that also, I, I wanted to contextualize those for, for real meaning and understanding, rather than simply a back and forth, right? So first of all, never apologize for coming in and giving your heartfelt context to anything. It's well-received by both board and staff, and it helps us to understand the, the efforts that your school is making. It helps us to understand, and, and for you to understand what more we might expect, right? As we have this discussion going forward. And so, no apology necessary, we greatly appreciate it. And so no apology necessary, we greatly appreciate it, and we will duly noted that that was received in the way you've described by you and why. So we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The deficiency number four that has been brought out discusses material misrepresentations that have made by Vanguard. And I just want to mention that each request that the state charter board staff has made to address that, we have implemented and taken care of, and this deficiency should Some of the corrective actions that we've taken to address that, including posting corrective statements, clarifying documents, and providing additional information to make sure that the statements are clear and are accurate.
I'll take this one and address deficiency number five, identified some enrollment, marketing, and lottery practices. I won't read this whole statement, I believe you all have it, so I'd like to go to the next slide. Initial corrective actions, again, we've provided a lot of information to staff, everything that's been requested. We've marketed to all students, I'm going to speak to that in the next couple of slides. Vanguard continues to provide an open welcoming and safe environment for all students, and the school is taking additional steps to make sure that the immediate population in West Valley City around the school, that they, they're aware of the school, that, I'll talk about some of the things that we're doing to ensure that, that everyone feels welcome at the school. The school's lottery opened January 1st, it closes at the end of March, so it'll have been open three months. Next slide. We also, and a lot of this was Charles and Simon Robenheimer, the director at Endeavor Hall, they met together quite a bit. Both school boards have held and approved an articulation agreement in their public meetings that we are now asking US State Charter School Board to approve that will give an enrollment preference to graduating sixth-grade students at Endeavor Hall to get enrollment preference to attend Vanguard Academy for seventh grade. Some of the feedback we received is that Endeavor Hall loses younger siblings when the sixth grader moves on to another school, and so we're hopeful that that will help those parents keep the younger kids at Endeavor Hall and have a spot for the incoming sixth, seventh graders at Vanguard. Next.
Endeavor Hall.
Oh, Endeavor Hall, we share a parking lot. They are on the north side of the parking lot, and Vanguard Academy is, is on the south.
Next slide.
Yeah, next slide. These are some of the, the specific things that we've done. We've, we had an open house this last Tuesday. We distributed flyers both in English and Spanish. We, physical flyers were given to Endeavor Hall. We also paid for advertisement on Facebook and pushed those really hard to all parents that live in West Valley within a 10-mile radius of the school. And I have actually pulled up some of the data from those ads, and I'd like to report on, on how many people those have reached. So the ad on the right, that was just our, our general ad that, you know, here we are, we're open, you know, school's open for enrollment. As of Tuesday, there've been over 4,900 post impressions, it's reached 3,381 people, 118 engaged in the post, and it led to 35 links to Vanguard's website. We have the link there so they can go right to the school to get more information about enrollment. That was for the main ad. For the English flyer, 4,100 post reach, leading to 53 website clicks. And the Spanish flyer, 5,500 post impressions, 2,900 post reach, and 40 website clicks. I'd also like to note that during the open house, there was a Spanish translator available for any non-native English speakers, speaking families that wanted more information about the school. And if you go to the website on the enrollment button, there are also instructions in Spanish that clearly help people to either read in English or Spanish the information to fill out the, the enrollment button. And that Spanish option was also available during last year's enrollment as well. So the school is, is taking real and meaningful steps to do what they can to let the community know about the school, let, you know, making sure that the students in the surrounding area know about the school, and that they absolutely feel welcome there. We feel like it's a great education choice for students in the area.
This is actually a statement, the board members here had the chance to hear from one of our students, Michelle Garcia, and she had posted a statement here that echoes some of the things that she had brought out. If we can go to the next slide. I just want to mention a statement that her father had issued too, and I had the opportunity to have her father come into my office and meet with me and thank Vanguard for what they have done. He has two daughters that attend Vanguard Academy. And as was mentioned, Michelle began her high school experience at West High School. And at the end of her second year there, she was failing nearly every class. And her father feared that she was just going to drop out, and that was going to be the end of her education. He was able to enroll her in Vanguard, and over the last two years, we've been able to help her go from a student that was ready to drop out to a student taking college courses and recovering her grades. And she is on schedule to graduate, heading into a college career path that'll take her into the medical industry. And has the ability to have the GPA that'll help carry her into that industry. And her father wanted to make sure that this board understood the value that Vanguard has brought to his daughters and to his family. Also, this slide just kind of echoes some of what was brought out by the various mentors, and so I'm not going to spend any time on this, but I do appreciate the help and the input that we've received from our mentors and for the, the assistance and the role that they have played for Vanguard. We can go to the next slide. So in summary, I want this board to understand that Vanguard has taken extensive actions to ensure that Vanguard is using state funds properly and that we will use state funds property, properly. We are taking actions to make sure and ensure compliance in our board meetings, and to correct any misrepresentations that have been, happened, and also to actively market and open and welcome all students within our community.
So we, we recognize or realize that not everybody at the board has had a chance to visit Vanguard and see how great it is. So we thought we'd bring a little bit of that greatness here and show you, show a little video.
Vanguard actually offers a ton of opportunities. We get the chance to take college classes.
College classes.
College classes.
College classes that will help you build your career while being still in high school.
I always know if I'm going to be a teacher, to help me with whatever I need and also other students.
I can tell that the teachers care about me, they do everything they can to help me succeed.
But they're willing to work with them and listen and help them with whatever they need.
Yeah, whenever I needed help with a assignment, it was always easy to ask a teacher for help.
Vanguard teachers make sure that we get our things done, and they help us achieve higher than I ever thought I would.
If I'm Vanguard, they help me go get it up, and then I keep moving forward to try to get, give that up to the best it can be.
I feel like Vanguard really cares about our success. The counselors, the teachers, and the staff, they'll want the best for us.
If I didn't have Vanguard, my education would probably be worse. I'm sort of probably dropped already, or I'd be doing even more credit recoveries if it weren't for Vanguard helping me out with all of my grades.
Vanguard gives me the opportunity to be in an accelerated class. I'm in the accelerated math class, and I'm doing two years of math in just one year.
And the teachers look out for us so much, and it's crazy how much our teachers and students care for us all.
Now, stay after hours and do, do whatever it takes to help me succeed.
I noticed that in Vanguard, all the students are treated equally. I've been to another school, and I wasn't treated the same as I was in Vanguard. Here at Vanguard, I'm treated like a regular person.
Everybody treats us nicely, and they really help me.
I feel like in Vanguard, we have everybody working together, and everybody gets along and knows each other really well. Like, I'm friends with the seventh graders, eighth graders, are friends with 12th graders, like, we all help each other out.
I also feel like I would lose a lot of things that I have right now if I, if I went to a different school.
Usually, if there is ever a problem, we can always go to the staff, and they'll do the rest of it, and it'll always get solved.
I don't think there's been a single time while I was going through this school that I felt like I was unwelcome or unwanted.
Here at Vanguard, I know that the teachers care for them, and they care about our success.
Okay, thank you so much. Do you mind staying for a minute while we ask whichever of you maybe can answer specific questions, those questions? And if I may, members, I'm going to go ahead and ask the first one. So I'd first like to comment and say, we, we really appreciate your time. We know that you've put a lot of effort into some creative solutions. And we know that in part, that's because, to be honest, you didn't like ours. We understand. We understand that the, the recommendation we had was kind of a wholesale change of personnel at the top. And we, we understand also why, given, and you do too, why we pivoted from that particular decision as a board and decided to implement the mentors, which we think has been very What, what we're looking at now, as, as you articulated so well, is a, is some creative solutions that may take us to the resolution of those deficiencies as they're implemented and as we see them. That remains to be seen, and what we're considering today is whether or not to, first of all, amend your charter such that these, some of these creative solutions can be solidified in your, in your documents, and then also to consider maybe suggestions that other members may have as to how these processes can be refined and move us closer to resolution of particularly that procurement deficiency. On the other deficiencies, we want you to continue to work with staff to resolve those, and based on your presentations and some of the documentation we've received recently, staff may in fact determine that some of those are resolved. But we'd like you to consider working with those staff members that you've been working with to resolve those. But as we're looking at some of your big asks today, they really do revolve around procurement and then one around enrollment. So a question I have, and again, I don't mean to in any way dampen enthusiasm for your creative solutions, which are hopeful for all of us, I would, I would imagine. I'll let the other board members speak for themselves, but they're hopeful to me. I like this idea of a procurement committee. I like the idea especially of a procurement officer, because I think that resolves a lot of internal issues related to the procurement process. A question I have, and maybe this is really an AAG Jones question, so I, or Jones, sorry, Olson, I'm so used to saying, we, I don't know if you all remember, that Kevin Olson is our new AAG, so I'm going to switch my Jones to Olson, and I know Kevin's name, and he knows that, but I apologize. But it would be, when you have a committee of five people, that's really a board quorum. And so my concern is, usually boards set up their committees such that they are not a quorum. Those committees can do work without, without putting an agenda out, without having a, committee work is, is sometimes kind of boring, and it, and no decisions can be specifically made typically by committees. They have to be made by a full board ultimately if they are a board decision, because not every decision has to be a board decision that's hap, that happens at a school. My concern would be, how do we resolve, and I don't have an answer for this, I'm just pushing this out there for my board members as well as for you guys at Vanguard, how do we resolve having a committee that is actually a quorum of board members, probably needs to do its work like other committees do in a sort of boring back room and bring a decision to a full board? Does this committee become a, a public, does this, is this a mini-board meeting? Can that even happen? Is it even legal? Does it really need to be a committee of four members so it can do real committee? AAG Olson, please help here.
It's okay, call me Jones, that's okay.
All right. He's a good guy.
He's a good guy. It depends on their governing documents as to what they can do as far as the creating committees, and I don't know what those, those state, but if their governing documents permit that, and they, those committees can also make decisions, but they are a public body, and you'd have to go through the process to do that if they're going to have that authority. So they'd have to meet in an open meeting and that kind of thing.
But it is legally something that could be done. In other words, you can have a quorum of the board, not the whole board meeting, in an open meeting?
Well, they would create, no, they would create a committee and give authority to that committee, they could do that with their governing documents, with their, with their, their bylaws and their...
Okay. And I can see that Ms. Llewellyn has a thought there.
Yeah, and I, I think I can clarify your question. That number was created intentionally so that it was a quorum, so that it, that committee will follow all of the requirements for the Utah Open and Public Meeting Act. That committee will be meeting at 6:00 PM, 30 minutes before the regularly scheduled board meetings. It was intentional so that every discussion, every decision that committee makes is transparent and it's public. That was, that was done intentionally, however, I believe, and I can only speak on behalf of myself and not the other board members, but if this, if your board would be more comfortable having that be a committee of four, I'm sure that, that the school would be open to that and could move those committee members down to four. But the school does know that that is a quorum, and all of, all of that meeting would be properly noticed and recorded with agendas, minutes, the, the meeting recordings and everything. That was intentional to be very transparent.
No, I, my mic wasn't working, I'm sorry about that, but what she's stating, I think, sounds good.
Just a follow-up question then, to whomever it is best directed. I was not aware, and so I may stand corrected, that a quorum of the board could meet without the full board. And if that, if that is a decision by the board to allow that, perhaps it can be allowed. But I just, I just would like clarification.
Well, again, it, it depends on your governing document, whether you're allowed to, to create committees that would have power to act with the board, but there would be, that would be, have to be based in your, your governing document.
Which is what you're asking for. Okay. That's very helpful to me. Other board members? Questions about these amendments? We have the articulation agreement. We also have the amendment to the charter that would allow for the committee that we've been discussing.
I just have a question to go back to their presentation, if that's okay.
Please.
I think you're really to be commended for your outreach to your community, I appreciate that. I would like to know if you, what the, the rubber meets the road results have been so far in terms of enrollment of students of color and other kinds of... and other kinds of ways of measuring diversity in their backgrounds.
Are you asking specifically to the applications we've received?
Yeah, I'd like, I mean, we had a lot of really great numbers about engagements and clicks and things like that. But what's the outcome in terms of actual applications and enrollments?
The, one thing that our enrollment application right now doesn't do is actually collect ethnic and racial information. So we have had a lot of applications that have for sure exceeded what our enrollment's going to be. Typically, we don't collect that racial information until as we're sending out the acceptances. Then when they actually apply to enroll, then they provide us with the information as far as race. So until we get to that point, it's actually difficult to say we've had so much of this type of ethnic applications and we don't.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I would be interested in seeing the data when you have it.
Other board members? Questions about, and Member Spiker, I know you're online and I don't want you to think we've forgotten you. I know you had to step off for a minute, but if you're there and have a question, this would be a good time.
I am, I am, oh, okay, great. But thank you.
Okay, Member Spiker, I think what you said was you don't have any questions at this time. It was hard to hear a little bit because our internet connection has been a little bit funky. Member Olson?
I just have a question for, either for the board or Director Lambert. Do we have any restrictions in authorizing these amendment requests where the school is on probation status?
So our typical modus operandi has been that if a school's on probation, we don't accept major changes to their charter agreement. They, I believe they kind of referenced this, that they originally sent in with more changes. And we sent it back and asked them just what would address probation. Because of course, if there's something that could be resolved through an amendment request, we wouldn't withhold them while on probation. And so the things that they put forward, there's two things in the one amendment request. They're increasing the number of board meetings from six to 10. And then they're adding that paragraph that they stated. In the document that was put online, they also added a purpose, but we sent back to them where they put that purpose. It was, it's referring to very seven specific purposes that are outlined in statute, and that wasn't one of those. So we asked them that if they want to keep that, they would need to put it in a different place. They, for at least right now, just removed it. So it's, so the one that was posted online, because there's a lot of things coming in at last minute, so the one amended Exhibit A did not get posted on there. But that is what they're requesting. And then they're also requesting, and we would also need to amend the charter agreement to add in the preference for students coming from Endeavor Hall. Does that answer?
Yes. So just to confirm, there's not any restriction in our rules or bylaws as a board that would prevent us from approving these amendments?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
I had a chance to text with Member Spiker because we were having trouble hearing her, and she does not have any questions at this time. I wasn't sure because it seemed as though she was posing one after the fact, but she does not. So if any present have questions still of Vanguard or of other staff members, board members? All right, well, go ahead, go ahead.
I just, I wanted to make sure I was understanding. Liz, you said that they had five issues of which one had been resolved. And then your materials referenced four issues. Are those the four remaining issues? Is that, okay. Didn't want to make sure we were dropping one somewhere along the line.
So there are a number of issues that the board could at this time take motions on. Wouldn't have to necessarily, but you have the opportunity. One, and I think that they should each be taken separately. I don't want to bundle these because board members may have specific questions and discussions to each part of what has been presented today. The articulation agreement, the amendments within the charter itself, and potential action relative to the school. Sorry.
So the probation status, there does need to be some kind of action to resolve. The school has requested that extension.
Yes, yes, exactly. So we can vote on the extension as well as the other things I mentioned. And we could do those, I'd like to do those separately, so that we have, if we have an issue with any specific part, we can discuss it together. So, members, if you have any motions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Member Smith?
If this is okay with you guys, I think the easiest thing to do would be to tackle the amendment requests first, right? And then we could move on to other things. And we're going to do those one at a time. So I would say, let's start with, I would, I'd like to move that this board approve Vanguard Academy's request to amend their charter to include an articulation agreement with Endeavor Hall.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, Member Olson has seconded the motion made by Member Smith. Is there discussion to the motion? All right. Let's call for a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Member Spiker? I'm watching my texts as well. Okay, we're going to assume that is an aye from her unless I see differently on my phone. And so that motion passes unanimously. Do I have another motion?
Okay. I would like to move that this board approve Vanguard Academy's request, their amendment request for their charter to incorporate the.
Procurement?
Thank you, the procurement committee language.
And?
There are a few different changes.
Yeah, there are a couple of different changes.
You want to do those separately?
Hold on, we're going to start over on that motion. Give us a minute. One of the things we try to do is to be specific. Yeah.
Why don't you do it?
We're not doing that. It's just the two.
It's just the two components of that, of that attachment to our agenda.
You want me to handle those two things separately?
Yes. No, no, you could handle, I think you, I think we could handle those together.
Okay, okay. I would like to move that this board approve Vanguard Academy's charter amendment request to approve the changes to include a procurement committee and to amend the number of meetings per year in their bylaws.
Member Smith has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Member Olson has seconded the motion. Is there discussion to the motion? Check to make sure, since we're having a little technical difficulty. Then we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. All right. That motion passes unanimously. And we have one other consideration now at this point. For to the probation, the six-month was requested.
I would like, if that's okay.
Please, member.
I would like to move that we approve Vanguard Academy's request for a six-month extension to their probation.
Okay, Member Smith has made a motion. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Member Olson has seconded the motion. Is there discussion to this motion? I just maybe have a comment before a vote comes. And I'm one of those old people who's opposite. I can see you only with my glasses on clearly and I can read only with them off. So I apologize for that. They come on and off so that I can see what I need to see. I appreciate Vanguard's request for this extension. I think it's warranted, given the individuals we've put in place and the momentum that has occurred there with that partnership. I also think that we are not in a position at this time to make another decision because of the need to see these changes, these creative solutions to the kind of looming deficiency in action and to be assured in our minds that they do resolve the deficiency at some point in the future. And one of the things that this board really strives to do is to make decisions based on good information. And sometimes that's difficult when even though we're partnership, we have a partnership. We've authorized you. We want you to be successful. But we have that time when, at times, we hold you accountable. We monitor and we can lock horns with a school in that process. It's not perfect, but it almost always happens when a school is on probation, that we become not so much adversarial, but a little bit of that slips in. And it can taint the way that you see your authorizer and it can taint the way that we see a school that we authorize. It's an unfortunate byproduct of that situation. And so one of the things that we want to stress is how much we want you to succeed in resolving these deficiencies. And part of our goodwill in demonstrating that is to grant this probation extension so that we can give credence and opportunity to your efforts to try to resolve it in a way that we didn't see, but that we're open to considering. And so I just want you to know that. I imagine this vote will be in the affirmative and that it is a show of our confidence in your efforts to try to make this work and our hope that you will. So if I could call for a vote then at this time. Oh, and Member Smith?
I also wanted to say, I'm really grateful that you have welcomed the mentors that we've provided and that you would like to continue working with them. And I would hope that we would continue to have them work with mentors as needed.
Of course. Right, any other comments from board members or questions? All right, at this time, I would ask for a vote on the motion that's on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Member Spiker, let me just make, Member Spiker, is that an aye from you as well?
Aye.
That was a lot, all right. That was punctuated here. Then that motion passes. And at this time, we will recess for lunch. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you for your, this crowd of supporters, as well as this crowd of board members and staff members who have come to give us some context. We appreciate your presence here. It's a big group and it shows your commitment to the effort. Thank you. He's our school performance coordinator. I'm sorry, I misread that agenda item. But he will be giving us our financial report and that's an important report. And I think that you've had it prepared for some time and have been waiting for a moment to actually present it to us. Is that correct?
Sort of, yeah. We've been working on this. Typically, this would have been given in February, but things were pushed back. And so we were grateful to have the additional time to look at some of the finances. I have the great benefit of getting to speak to you today as a financial layperson. I don't know much about finances. I know how to manage my own. I know how to spend money. I'm very good at that. But talking about different figures is not my forte. So you get to hear from the uneducated side of finances today. I want to begin by talking about just a few things we want to consider and be mindful of as we go into our financial review today. The first of those, we have a new metric, which is the debt service coverage ratio. This is one that we started looking at. It helps us to understand, oh, sorry, on my screen, it's. I'm, yeah, it's one thing different here than it is up there. The debt service coverage ratio allows us to understand whether or not the LEA is going to be eligible or able to fulfill its debt obligation during the actual year. Our new, our second new metric this year is facility costs. We haven't really looked at this in the past, so we've now started tracking what percentage of each LEA's budget is going towards their facility. Our metric has set the threshold of 25% that we want schools to be spending less than 25% of their budget on their facilities. And then the next thing to just kind of consider, I'll talk about this with a few of our metrics. We need to be really mindful, especially with the financial metrics, when discussing average or median, because we have a few outliers from LEAs that have no debt whatsoever. And so all of their money that they get is now just profit and they're investing it. And so we have some LEAs that have really changed, they've skewed where our distribution is for all of our finances. So while overall, the state might be great in some areas, we also have some schools that are individually not performing well in those. But so just be mindful, there is a difference when we look at the average or the median here. A few highlights for just the state, and I think this is. Yeah. This is very encouraging. Thank you, Member Smith. We had 61% of our schools met all six metrics. 80% of the schools only missed less than one. So five or more metrics were met. And we had no schools that missed all metrics entirely. So we're moving in a good direction. And then what we, for, I'm not sure why the letters are blacked out or the numbers are blacked out. That's, three schools had only met one metric and two schools only met two metrics. Additionally, when we look at the percent of schools that met each metric over time, we notice a couple of things. So annual cash flow, this is the only metric where we saw a decrease in the number of schools that met this metric. And it's a little bit interesting. We're not quite sure why, because a number of our schools got COVID funding and additional funds that way. And so we're not sure what might be contributing to this, the difference. So we're only at 75% of our schools met this metric in 2022 compared to the 87% who met it in 2018. Now, on the plus side, all of our other metrics. There we go. I know, it's so funny, yeah. Okay. All of our other metrics, we've actually increased in the percent of schools that have met the metrics from 2018. There were a few kind of dips around, excuse me, no. The 2021 was some slight dips for some of our schools, but not enough that we really have to think that the pandemic had any huge negative ramifications for our charter schools financially. Looking at a few of them individually, a few of the metrics individually, annual cash flow, we saw an increase in the amount that the schools had, not necessarily an increase in the number of schools that had a positive cash flow, is what I'm showing here with this. There was a slight, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So we do see an overall impact from COVID is that there was a lot of funding that was available to our schools and it was a.
was available to our schools, and it was a big help, that funding, to a number of our schools that really did need that assistance. And so, we do see that. What you're looking at in here, and something to note about the annual cash flow, is it really is something that you need to look at over a period of time. So, a one-year dip or a one-year increase isn't of big concern, it's more the overall trend. But if you go back to that slide, and we wait, oh, it actually did it. So if you look at, you can have, if the overall funding increased, that means that that's where really the majority of your schools, that they're increasing in that. But because of the percent that they weren't necessarily meeting it, you have some schools that just weren't meeting it. And that is something that we are seeing, is kind of, there, there's sometimes some big differences between the schools that are doing really, really well, and the schools that are not.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're, that's totally fine. I, oh, I'm here on, there we go. So, the annual cash flow, a couple of things I wanted to point out, like Director Lambert said, we've got to really look at this over time. It's hard to just look at a single year and, and see anything noteworthy in that. In the median, we've increased about $2,000 from what we saw five years ago. The, the reason, the reason I'm pointing this one out, especially because of the discrepancy between the average, so we had eight schools that had a, a positive annual cash flow over $2 million. And one of those schools actually had a positive cash flow that was about $5 million. Yeah, there's.
That's why this is something that you really do have to look at over time, because you might see a lot of fluctuation, especially if they're like, looking to bond, or they just bonded. So there's a lot of other things that come into play here.
They just fixed a roof.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, but there.
Yeah, but it's awesome for them.
There are, yeah, there are, there are a few outliers that are just millions of dollars, and everybody else is not quite there yet. So it really does skew our, you know, you look at, our average is 160, 100, excuse me, $104,000 more than what it was four years ago. But that's because we have a few of these schools that have such a large windfall of Change in net position, the thing that I am just really glad to see here, so change in net position again is showing the LEA's ability to pay for its debts based on all the assets that they have. You'll notice that in the last, both our average and our median has increased drastically over the last five years. We're about 200,000 more than what we were in FY18. And so, our schools have shown that through the pandemic, they spent wisely, and now have enough money saved up that they can cover all of their debts when they need to, which is, is great. Our current ratio, similarly here, so our, the target here is that they have greater than or equal to one, and this is another way to look at the LEA's ability to pay for its debts. And like you can see here, whether it's the average or the median, we've increased significantly. Our five-year average, 5.31, and then our, our median there, 2.86.
How many schools don't need that?
Um, I don't have that on me right now. I can look it up pretty quickly, once I get out of this window.
So, actually.
This one's really important.
So, for all of you to know, if, when you get into UCAP, you actually can look this up. We have reports in there, and I know there might be some challenges and, and times in getting on the internet and all of that, but we do have some really great reports in UCAP that would show that, and it would, you can even drill down to which schools.
Our next metric that I want to just speak about individually, yes.
I was going to say about that last metric, sometimes it'll be skeewampus if a school has just bonded.
Absolutely, yeah.
Can I speak to that? So we're talking about the current ratio. So you're talking about short-term, so really what is probably impacting that the most right now is the additional cash that schools have at the moment, that they've been able to get, and it's been able to help them. So that's, but current ratio is something like, if they can't even, if it's under one, that means they cannot cover all of their current liabilities, and that can be a little
As far as unrestricted days' cash on hand, so our metric is that the schools have at least 30 days, so that means they can cover a month. I've included a table here, we have 22 LEAs that have over 200 days' cash on hand. This right here is the top 10. Now, one of those, for example, we know is working on, on a new building. And so, there are any number of reasons why an LEA might be saving this much money. There's some pros for this. You know, a school that has this much cash on hand is probably pretty financially stable. You're, you've got your bases covered, you're making some good choices. It also allows the LEA flexibility to make decisions from really a point of power and safety, rather than necessity. They're not in debt, they're not having to make decisions about books based on whether or not they can actually afford it. They've got the money pulled aside, and they can say, yeah, we'd like to invest in these new books or these computers. So it does give the LEA some really good flexibility in terms of how they handle their own purchases.
These are mostly schools that have been around.
Also, these are all mostly schools that have been around. Yeah, yeah. We have one school, for example, it's not on this list, they have a debt, their debt-to-asset ratio is 113. And remember, our target is to have over one. So they're, they have no debt. They've, they've paid that off years ago, and so everything is just extra at this point. A couple of things that we think about, just, you know, we want LEAs to be mindful of, the, the job is not, or the, the point is not to have the highest amount of money in the bank account. And so, one thing we'd, we would encourage schools to think about is, if there's a reason that you're saving this much money, great, as long as you have that reason. But if you, you're just, or saving it, maybe there's some things we could spend it on, like teacher salaries, books, computers, all of that stuff. You know, anyway, I'll, I'll leave that at that. And then lastly, the days' cash on hand, I just wanted to point out that we've also seen an increase across the board, not just in those, those few schools. Our median was that we had 100 days' cash on hand. So we, most of our schools really do have quite a bit of money set aside that they could survive a month, and, and we've increased that this year up to 131. At this point, I will turn it back over to Chair Phillips for any, or Vice Chair Phillips for any questions or anything.
Do any of our members have questions? It's, you know, it's, it's all kind of good news, in, in terms of most of the trends, and.
Yep.
We're, we're pleased if our schools are both fiscally responsible and financially stable. So do you have a question? Yes, go ahead, Member.
I just say, I'm, I'm really interested in the outliers on either end, right? And so, I would love to see more, I know I could probably look it up for myself, if I can manage to get it, but, but I would be really interested to say, like, the ones who only met one metric, this, like, this is the one they met, but here's all the other ones, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we've actually started looking into that to see if there were any correlations between the metrics that different LEAs met. So far, nothing has jumped out, and we, we haven't been able to identify anything like that. We do have some other outliers that were, were fascinating. One school, Wallace Stigner, you know, we talked about this in their application last time, they have the 18 million cash reserves because of the new building and all of that stuff. So yeah, there's, there are some interesting outliers, definitely.
And if I can add to that, so that is part of our process, right? So we don't, we don't necessarily focus, if there's an outlier like the 18 million, okay, well, what's going on there? That was easily understood, explained. But in terms of if there's any problems, like those that are only meeting one or two, it goes through our process. And that's where we look at the R and Rs, and we ask, okay, what's the circumstances that's happening? And if, if there's concerns, then we, we elevate it or, or put it to the remediation team. So that's kind of how we, as staff, function. You've got William and his team, that they're looking at the information, the data, they're the information people. And then they pass that information on, both to the remediation team and to the support team, so that we can either look at what is the best remediation course, or look at areas for maybe needed training, or maybe areas of schools that could be mentors. So that's our overall process. Absolutely, those outliers, we're very interested in. And if the board wants to see those outliers as well, we, we'd be happy to present those as well, so.
I don't want to give you that. It's really interesting to me.
We do, it, it wouldn't be more to do, because that's what we do, is just presenting it, yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments? Dr. Evans, we appreciate that thorough presentation. Thank you. But we will go on to our next agenda item. This will actually be fairly short, because I gave a thorough legislative update last meeting, and oddly, some of the most interesting bills have yet to pass as this meeting started. And I've only been able to keep up a little bit with what's been happening today. So I'm going to, first of all, thank Kim Frank from the Utah Charter Network, and Royce Van Tassel from the Utah Association of Public Charter Schools. You know, they lead out on our lobbying efforts for charters, and often partner with other groups in education to, where our interests in char, with charters overlap with other educational interests. But the, the big, the big story coming out of legislative session this year is, of course, a huge increase in funds for education. And that can't, that cannot be denied, and we have to give the legislature high marks for that this year. Specifically, somewhere between 5% to 6% of a WPU equivalent is going to be given, it's about $275 million, is going to be given as largely unrestricted monies to LEAs for local priorities. That's kind of something that maybe didn't get as much press as it should have in the discussion and in the press, but it is, it's really great. It's, there are a few competitive grants within that for best practices and other things, but largely, it's LEAs, charter schools, figure out what you can do best with that money, and do it for your kids. There's a approximately 6% increase to the WPU, which is a nice increase, we're getting used to that increase. So I wouldn't say that it's not unexpected, that.
Almost keeps up with inflation.
Right, there it is. Yeah, we need that, almost, not quite keep up with inflation, but it's great, and especially with that 5% to 6% of unrestricted in addition. There's a 5% WPU equivalent in teacher compensation, that's going to go to salaries, and a, and a portion of that to benefits. I wanted you to know too, that there is some consideration given as well, because it was pointed out to the legislature, that when you give teachers an increase, you've got additional staff members who are not certified teachers, but that are working alongside them, paraprofessionals, custodial staff, others who are largely left out of that consideration, but are doing a similar work in many ways, they're supporting the children. And so, there was a, a, a little bit passed to ensure that they also get a raise, which I thought was great. I think that's very important. There's also about a 1% WPU equivalent for an equity pupil distribution, and that was important to, it's, there's a formula that's associated with that over the next number of years, that is going to slowly but surely give a percentage of the WPU to some of the districts that have the lowest property taxes, so that there's a, an opportunity for equity. And I really like that. I was in that discussion in, in the committee meeting, and they talked about how you really, you know, you want the kids, wherever they're born in Utah, to have a, a good education, and not have it be sort of socio-economically driven in that way by property taxes. There's also a 1% WPU equivalent for at-risk enhancement, always a good thing too. And there is that 1% WPU equivalent for the option for any LEA or charter school to offer full-day kindergarten. And I just think that is absolutely wonderful. And it, it's the way that the legislature has offered that money makes it very flexible for LEAs to meet the desires of the enrolled students in their school and the parents. So it's not a have-to, but it's a get-to, and it's anticipated that many, many, many LEAs will take advantage of that, and many parents will. So that, that amounts to an approximately 20% WPU equivalent increase, if you count all that in. And then, it, it appears that SB 65, which will provide, which will require modifications related to how charter school authorizers do certain types of business, particularly for us, because we authorize more than 10 schools, and that would be that we are likely to see a, a committee structure in our own SCSB that will mirror what the USBE does with their committees. So that's going to actually be kind of a big change. Not necessarily an unwanted one, you know, it, it does, it does create a little more work for staff, and a little bit more work for the board, too, board members, but it's a transparency kind of focused bill. And it, it appears as well that SB 55 for substitute will pass, that talks, provides a process for how public school instructional material will be approved. And of all the bills that were out there, this was probably the one that will achieve the desired goals with the most reasonable amount of work for LEAs. So if you're looking at it that way, with transparency as a goal, that will be good. It also requires people who, or vendors who provide digital content to give notice of changes in that digital content, so that teachers, students, and parents aren't surprised. HB 465 was interesting to me, the first sub. That was the bill that really was very prescriptive on library materials, and the first, or the substitute that was discussed in committee was listened to by the sponsor, such that books that would perhaps have been thrown out of the library based on a single phrase or a group of phrases, that will not be the litmus test anymore for that, and in fact, it will be more of a, of a taking of the work as a whole, which is what we've been used to in public education, where you see what the merits are, what's being presented, what the themes are, and how that phraseology may or may not be shocking within the context of that book. So we're looking at a softening, if you will, of some of those bills. I wanted to just highlight, I've circled two here. It appears that the school fee amendment, which will prohibit most curricular fees, including textbook, textbook fees beginning, actually, in this coming school year, will, will have passed. And that wasn't entirely unexpected by LEAs, as that was, that was coming, that was, that's been talked about for a couple of years now, and even, even before that, but in all, in all sincerity in the last couple of years. And then, as you know, if you've been following the news, SJR 3, proposal to amend the Utah Constitution, which would authorize the state to, it would change the constitution of our state, and allow, allow a kind of different earmark, I think, for income taxes, that, I may have the number wrong on that one. But that's, that's been up in the air still. It looks like some part of that will pass and, and allow Utah voters to vote on it, but it's been a very difficult negotiation with education stakeholders who are not at all settled with that particular proposal. They don't, they don't yet throw their support behind it at all, and I think that the legislature was hoping that there would be much more resolution by today, so that that would be more of a, it would be a fait accompli, that it would be on the ballot for voters, because that, remember that, that's how the constitution has changed in our state. And so, that wraps up my particular presentation today with the, I want to end on the positive note, with a lot of money going to education. And remember, some of it is one-time. Do you remember the 5% to 6% that is for unrestricted funds? That is a one-time allocation with that surplus of one-time monies that the state has this year, but really could set people on a great track with curriculum or something else, that they might need devices and whatnot. So we thank the legislature for their generosity in that regard, and for thinking about education with some of that one-time money. So unless there are comments?
No closed session.
I, I do not think we anticipated, did we anticipate?
It's always on the agenda.
Okay. So, yes, if, if anyone would like a closed session, or has something that they feel they do need to discuss in closed session, we could contemplate that. Or if you have comments about legislation you want to make at this time. All right. Then, then we are looking for one final.
I'll do it. I'll move that we adjourn.
Oh, woo!
I thought I'd do something today, since Michelle did all the other most.
Thank you, everyone.